Changes to the organic contract in the service.
Not necessarily, no.
This changed where some of the wording was because at first I was worried about some of the wording they took out, but then they put it in different places.
I know. Okay. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming to our September 2nd, 2025 City Council Study Session. This meeting can be livestreamed at the city's YouTube channel. It can also be viewed at longmountainpublicmedia.org/watch or on Comcast Channels 8 and 880. May we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Peck.
Present.
Councilmember Christ. Mayor Protem Hidalgo-Ferrin. Councilmember McCoy. Councilmember Popkin. Councilmember Rodriguez. Councilmember Yarborough. Mayor, you have quorum.
Thank you. Let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers, and only those on the list will be invited to speak at the first public invited to be heard. Each speaker is limited to three minutes, and we would like your name and address, please. Do we have any motions to direct city manager to add agenda items to future agendas? Mayor Protem Hidalgo-Ferrin.
Thank you, Mayor. And actually, I have two motions, but they're both same topic. So the first motion is to bring back to a future agenda, future agenda, the open space disposition ordinance, Section 14.52.032, Process A, Section 1, to revise the definition of public purpose. Currently, as it stands, it says what is considered, so the term "public purpose" means and includes, but is not limited to, the use of property for right-of-way easements for city roads, utilities, and life essential infrastructure, and for the sale exchange of property interests that result in a net benefit to open space program. So, you know, kind of looking and analyzing that language, I would recommend to amend it to state what cannot be considered as a, yeah, as not be considered in the disposition of open space. So that would be industrial housing or to private entities. Can I have a second?
I'll second that. On your motion, can you restate the motion without reading the?
Oh, the actual section.
Exactly, so we can do it.
Yes, so to bring back to a future agenda, the open space disposition ordinance, Section 14.52.03030, Process A, Section 1, to revise the definition of public purpose, to amend to state what cannot be considered in the disposition of open space, which would include industrial housing and private entities.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from councilors? Seeing, I see, I see questions going through your head.
I see the little thought bubbles going on.
So I'll give you a few minutes, Counselor Popkin.
Yeah, just still trying to digest the language. Mayor Protem, could you just elaborate more on kind of the impetus for this, the rationale for?
Yeah, I think, you know, in looking at some of the concerns as we look at property interests and maybe the definition of net benefit, I know you tried to bring that forward, but it seemed in communications I've had with public and people who were specifically interested in best interest in open space, that it really had to do with, we need to make sure that we are not opening the gateways to have industrial sites on open space or housing. You know, housing is determined to be a need. It is a great need. So that, you know, but the open space would not be considered in those specific, you know, in that criteria for disposition, for land exchange or property sale.
No, thank you. So you're in, is?
So just to add more definition to it and more guardrails around.
So your intent behind this is to narrow the definition of what public purposes are allowed?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
So I do understand, and I think it's a good idea, listening to the public, because the way that this amendment that is to the original open space ordinance is, can be nuanced. And when we have just recently used it, we have followed the amendment, which allows us to do a swap or a sale, and we want to, what I'm hearing is that you want to close that gap.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Counselor Christ.
Thank you, Mayor. So how does this differ from just the ordinance that enacted open space? Doesn't, doesn't that ordinance itself restrict disposition?
In a way, it does, but we had an amendment to that ordinance.
Yeah, except in that one amended circumstance, yes.
But the way the ordinance, is this true, Counselor, I mean, Mayor Protem, that the way the amendment was written?
And this was the one that would allow for the sale exchange of property interests that result in a net benefit from the open space program, but no, the other, the sentence before that.
Right.
So to use right-of-way and easements for city roads, utilities, life essential infrastructure. So I thought there was, yeah, so I think it adds more guardrails. So as we're looking at for the benefit of the city, and I did not copy and paste that particular ordinance, but there was one that was like to a general, that the city council feels necessary, where was it at? I apologize, I took the one piece out. The disposal should be sensitive to the integrity of future properties. No, that wasn't that one. There was another section that's on there that addressed how it's, it could be considered a benefit to the city, so that net benefit piece. But I'm wanting to put guardrails on there, so we're specifically excluding, like, we're not going to consider it for housing, we're not going to consider it for industrial or for sale of private, to put business or another component on there.
So it would be, how do you nuance a net benefit?
Yes. It was kind of to address that, that particular issue.
Because different councils can interpret net benefit differently, and then use open space, land, for however they interpret that net benefit.
Different councils can change the ordinance altogether.
They could, they could, and then that's going to go into my second one.
Counselor Yarborough.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not going to sit here and act like I know what y'all talking about. So Eugene, can you please explain, like, what are the consequences of what we're talking about here? Before, I mean, I'm just a little confused about the terminology and everything that she just said.
Sure, ma'am. Council Eugene May, City Attorney. So Mayor Protem is referencing the process part of the open space disposition ordinance. Provision A, disposal of open space should be for a public purpose as determined by city council. So that's the primary test. Is there a public purpose? Section A1 goes on to state the term "public purpose" means and includes, but is not limited to, use of the property for right-of-way and easements for city roads, utilities, and life essential infrastructure, and, separate category, sale or exchange of property interests that result in a net benefit to open space. And so what I'm hearing is a discussion to determine whether additional guardrails should be put on that definition of public purpose. Certainly, the right-of-way easements, utilities, and life essential infrastructure is including, but not limited to, and so there is room for interpretation. And the net benefit is not defined, is to be determined by council.
Yes.
So I do have a question for you, Mayor Protem. When do you want this brought back? And remember, we have, does this affect the negotiations we have in place at the moment?
I think because of, well, and I'll defer to legal, but I'm assuming that since it's ongoing, would this, I don't think this would be grandfathered, you know, this would be, that negotiations is separate and apart from any upcoming changes, or would it impact that as well?
Well, that is our.
My hope would be that it would, but.
Mayor and Council, I think I recollect that the distal toll was postponed or tabled until additional progress is made in some of these negotiations. So.
So I mean, I would like to see a date certain, but.
You can put the date certain on it. This is your motion.
But I also want to honor that we're in the middle of budget as well. So, you know, I guess just the next available spot where that could be brought back to us.
Okay.
Okay, you know, working within your.
Okay, seeing no other questions or comments, let's vote. Okay, that's fine.
So I know we are in negotiations, but does this impact that decision? That's, that's, I mean, I don't, I didn't hear a yes or no.
I think that's part, could be part of the motion, if we'd like to amend the motion, that it would not impact our ongoing.
Negotiations.
Or the date certain to bring it back could be in January?
I don't know, they're whispering over there, so.
They're whispering, no.
I just want to, I just want to hear a yes or no, and.
Mayor and Council, we're whispering and conferring, or conferring, not whispering. So if you change the criteria on the open space disposition, it could change the outcome of the distal toll. I mean, I don't know what might be changed, but it could impact that and therefore maybe impact negotiations.
Yeah, I think that's. I think it depends on what you do and how it's approached.
If the wording would, would say, any future negotiations excluding the distal toll, because that is already in, in progress, but the motion would be to address any future negotiations? Would that be?
So I think inherently, there's a policy question for this body.
Yes, exactly.
And there's, there's two policy questions for this body. One question is, do you want to amend the ordinance to restrict it to, by adding additional guardrails? That's one question. The second question is, when do you want it to become, when do you want to have the first and second reading, which will then answer a second question, is how do you want to approach this? And so I think what we're saying is, depending on the answer to those two questions, it may, and it may not, but it's inherently a policy question that will give us additional guidance in terms of how we proceed with that conversation.
Okay, so I am open to any amendment, if anybody.
Counselor McCoy. Whoops.
Oh, you turned everybody else off.
I know, can you turn yours back on, please?
He didn't have his on.
Oh, I thought you did. Well, it keeps going off. Try it again. Turn yours on again, please, Counselor Popkin. Thank you. It won't let me turn you on. Try it again.
It just wants you to stop talking.
There you go.
Oh, now we can both talk. Shall we arm wrestle?
No, you go first.
Thank you, Mayor. When something's tabled, it seems like it should stay tabled, and we shouldn't talk about it until it comes back. And I am in favor of maintaining open space. But here's part of the problem is that we've already said we're going to maintain open space, and we have contracts and agreements and things in writing, and we just need to follow those. And I don't know if adding more verbiage actually puts more teeth into it. So I appreciate the philosophy. I just don't know if it's useful right now.
The intent is to minimize any misinterpretation. So just to have it very, because the way that it could be, you know, so, but not limited to, or, you know, so it's, it opens the door for other types of negotiations to happen that might not be in the best interest of preserving open space.
I agree, but what I'm saying is, it seems like it's this other ordinance that allowed that, that is the problem.
So I think it is essential to have that opportunity for, so in the event, so I think of Dickens, why this came to be in the first place during the flood, and so there were some mitigation pieces that needed to happen, where we did have to meddle around with open space for the safety of people and, you know, the preservation of land as well.
Right.
Because of the flood. So I think it's important to still have that, but set some guardrails around it.
And you don't have to vote for it.
Yeah, it's true. I just want to explain that I'm in favor of open space, but I feel like adding on more and more verbiage is not always helpful.
Counselor Popkin?
So Mayor Protem, I support the intent of this, and I, I think because we have an active item that's currently been tabled, and is part of active negotiations, I don't think it would be particularly savvy on our part of the city to, to change the rules that we might be playing by. Like, if we were going to go this route, my, my suggestion would be that we remove the item from the table, figure out how we want to resolve the table distal toll issue before we just change the policy that might impact something in active negotiations. Because there are other complicating things that, that might be relevant to this, given that parallel item, and I just don't think.
Now, we could move to, to exclude that piece from, from this.
Yeah, I was trying to think, no, I appreciate that. I was trying to think about how we would do that without kind of creating a separate set of rules for us versus what would normally happen. So like, I, I think I'm, if, if there wasn't a competing, if there wasn't an item already on the table that's directly affected or impacted by this, or we'd have to completely set up a separate track altogether in the rules, I would be very supportive of where you're trying to take this to better define the open space disposition piece of that. So I think at this point, I would be voting no because of the negotiations we have going on.
Okay, so do you want to vote on it?
Yeah.
All right, let's vote, please. And that failed with myself, Mayor Protem, and Counselor McCoy voting for. Counselor Popkin, Yarborough, Christ, and Rodriguez voting against. Thank you.
So then I had a second motion, but I don't know if, well. I'm wondering, so this one is, the second motion was to direct staff to put together ballot language for a measure on the, well, yeah, I don't know what, you know, we'll kind of look at the timeline, but to put together a ballot language for a measure that would require any land exchange or disposition of open space to be bought to for a public vote. And so I'm wondering then if that should be one that we hold off on, but.
Well, you can't put it on this ballot.
No, we wouldn't put it on this ballot. It would be for like the next year, so we have. Yeah. It would probably be the 2027 or 2028.
Yeah, it wouldn't be able to go on any special election.
No, 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 no.
Counselor Christ.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm wondering if we could get a survey before then, if that might be a topic that we could survey the public.
Well, I know when this whole, the whole open space thing came forward to us, we actually heard from several, I heard from several hundred people. I heard from like more than what people participated in the survey, but, and it was overwhelmingly, the concern was around the lack of trust. They were concerned about, you know, nefarious actions on our part, that we were kind of doing a bait and switch with the last open space. So my intent of bringing both of these forward is to really show that we are trying to work in the best interest of the community and the desires of the community. So if we are able to kick any kind of disposition of open space that would allow for a public vote, they have more autonomy over how this open space fund is being utilized, and our, you know, how our actions, these actions are being utilized. That they have more control over that than just having us be the arbitrary folks who make the decision on their behalf.
So.
But I can hold off on this particular motion at a later date after we're kind of wrapped up with the other.
Yeah, but could that be a motion then to, to include? Yeah, but could that be a motion then to, to include any disposition of open space goes to a vote before it's finally decided?
That's, that's what, that was my motion.
Okay.
That is my motion, yes.
Yeah, okay, just in general, not particularly this one.
Not, not this one, just in gen, going forward.
Well, this one would be resolved anyway by the time we.
By the time we get it out there, yeah. I mean, we can, yeah, if you all wanna decide for the next council, but. I, I can wait.
Okay, thank you. Not seeing any other motions on the floor. I'm going to move on to our public invited to be heard. Remember that we, you have three minutes, and we would like your name and address. And the first one is Georgetta. Georgetta Johnston, we haven't seen you in a while, Georgetta. Welcome. Don't forget to turn on your microphone.
Thank you. Good evening, Georgetta Johnston, 320 Homestead Parkway, Longmont, Colorado, 80504. Thank you, Mayor, and all you precious people, council, for letting me speak. I came for another, for some reasons, but I don't see any of the things that, this is a good city. I don't see any of the things to a certain extent that I haven't been in a long time talking about better stores, that we have, they go out of town to shop, that goes our money. Another thing is indoor, outdoor skating thing, the little thing over there, I, I hope one of these days we get it organized where we have it for, for our young people. And ice hockey in different situations, so they don't have to take it out of town and do that, because this city, I think it's 100,000, maybe it's getting up to be 150, I take the Times' call. So it looks like some way, somehow, we could do that, and also where we could have a entertainment, art and entertainment center for the different situations, which makes our town better, which also we go out of this city and, and pay our money to other cities to do that, which I don't think, and, and I'm not for so many breweries and marijuana situations, teaching our children, that kind of stuff. I think we need to help our youth and our young people and, you know, families, different things. I notice we're not having rhythm on the river or whatever that was down in Boston anymore. I don't understand why. That was a, a really nice entertainment fun, had different things for kids. I used to take my grandkids and stuff like that. It seems like we're not doing some of that stuff, which I feel like that we need to, and I don't know, I noticed lots of apartments, lots of buildings, and I know there's a lot of homeless, and I feel sorry for them. But I'm 80, I've lived here all my life, I'll be 81, so, um, I'm for helping people, but I'm also for helping the seniors, you know, and not taking away from them and making things better. So that's why I come, because a city and our housing, things that should be, um, safety, take care of stuff, and be honest, and things like that, you know, I noticed the roads are better, the holes where we wouldn't be driving junkers. Thank you very much for some of you that saw me and said, that you missed me a little bit, that's very nice. Going on open heart surgery is a rough road, so, you know, at least I'm still in my right mind and doing okay, and I want a good city, that's why I come, you know? And I know you're all working at it, trying to agree, are we done at three minutes, already?
Already, Georgetta.
Well, that's all right. Lord bless you, keep doing a wonderful job and work on this city of the nice things we need, please.
Thank you, Georgetta.
You're welcome, it was nice seeing you.
Kim Mattson.
Hello.
Hello.
I would just like to voice my concern over.
Kim, would you mind giving us your name and?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's fine.
Forgot. Kim Mattson, 967 Hover Ridge Circle, Longmont. My concern over the power grid. So with the Platt River Power Authority, I did talk with someone there a few months ago, and really didn't get a good answer on how the power grid, the lines are protected against solar flares, power surges, EMPs, something like that. So I see all the building that's going up in the city, I've seen all of the apartments, we're attracting more people. But if our power system, our power grid is not protected, I mean, it's putting everyone, their health and safety at risk. And I know the city does be ready classes and stuff, I mean, that's great for a couple of days, but I'm just not seeing any protection for the power grid. So I'm just wondering if that's being looked at, is anybody looking at it? How important is that? Because it's, you know, we've got the solar, we've got the coal, we've got, which is great, but if there's no way to get it to us or to anybody else, then, you know, what good is it? So before we attract 50 gazillion more people and put in a lot more housing, how about protecting what we have and protecting the citizens that are here? And I just think that's a key piece that if that's not set, then what's, what's the use of anything else? You know, so, that's it, thank you very much.
Kim, would you mind, I'm gonna pass this down, would you mind giving us your phone number, not over the speakerboard, to the city clerk? And we can have somebody from LPC contact you?
That would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Michelle Bragg. I think it's Michelle.
It's Michael.
Michael.
Yes, Michael Bragg. 600 Sandpoint Drive, Longmont, Colorado, 80504. Thank you all for taking the opportunity to listen to me, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak. I'd like to urge you to support the proposal from Longmont Public Media to continue in the capacity in which they have been supporting the city. I am moved to Longmont in January of 2020, interesting timing, and Longmont Public Media was the first organization that made me feel like I really belong here. Last year, I left my manufacturing job after 25 years due to burnout, started my own business here in Longmont, and Longmont Public Media supports that business through the resources that it provides to me. So I learned how to do a podcast, I now have two podcasts, Workforce Bliss helps employers understand how to engage the workforce nowadays, and I also have the Voices of Colorado Manufacturing. So those resources are vital to our community. I think it's really critical that we also remember how Longmont Public Media is supporting our workforce. So as lots of people are getting laid off, there is an opportunity for them to go and learn, they, they don't have to pay one penny to learn to, to upskill, so they can use media equipment, they can use computers, they can, you, learn how to do graphic design. And AI is not going to tell the stories that Longmont has. AI is not gonna do that, and Longmont Public Media is there, they're here, right now, filming this, this meeting right now. I think it's very vital that we continue to support Longmont Public Media, I urge you to. I think there, um, we risk losing our voice, we risk the, the residents of Longmont risk losing our voice if we don't support this proposal from Longmont Public Media. I think they, they ignited my entrepreneurial journey, they enabled me to have a voice to my, my customers, which I really didn't have before that. And podcasts are one, are one way to do that, you know, there's lots of different ways, social media is a thing, but podcasts are pretty vital source for communications for business. AI cannot encapsulate the essence of Longmont or tell our unique stories. Longmont Public Media empowers its members to produce films, record music, perform live music, rent high-quality equipment. Let's not just talk about community values, let's act on them. Together, we can ensure that Longmont remains a place where every story is told. And to Georgetta's point, arts and, arts and entertainment, it's right there in Longmont Public Media.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Lance Whitaker.
Mayor and council, my name is Lance Whitaker, 1750 Collier Street, Longmont, Colorado, been a resident for over 40 years now, happily a resident for over 40 years. Today is National Another Look Unlimited Day, which is just another way of saying fall, spring cleaning. So take another look around your house and see what you can get rid of, or sell, or recycle. And it's also Blueberry Popsicle Day. Other than that, I have nothing for you. So you guys have a nice day and hope to see you next week.
Thank you very much. Strider Binstone.
How do? I'm Strider Binstone, 951 17th, and a couple of things. One, well, we've had more church shootings, there's several things that America still leads the world in, school shootings, church shootings, shopping center shootings, whatever. And people don't, you know, it's public policy that it has nothing to do with having 400 million guns, including assault rifles, but the gun violence prevention programs were cut and defunded by the current president, and SNAP benefits and Medicaid and housing and everything else, which puts people under more stress, but they all, everybody is forced to have guns, basically, but that's what we're dealing with. By the way, I, and they're abolishing history. If, if you don't, you know, if, if you, if you don't know the history, you're bound to repeat it, and that's what we're dealing with. The, uh, I first learned the history from Fannie Lou Hamer in 60 years ago, last month, on the boardwalk in Atlantic City, when we just learned, I got, they found the bodies of Chaney Goodman and Schwerner. It was on my 20th birthday that I was there looking for a job, and I saw the demonstration, and I joined up, and Ms. Hamer came down and spoke to us on the boardwalk after she had given her speech at the, at the credentials committee. But what's going on? The, um, the Voting Rights Act, last Thursday, the imminent death of the Voting Rights Act, the, the basic singular thing for what democracy can be or begins with is the right to vote. And that's what I've spent my whole life standing for, and that is actively under destruction right now. The last Thursday in the New York Times, the imminent death of the Voting Rights Act. And last, uh, yesterday, we had a labor demonstration, and we had 400 people in Longmont. Thank you, I was one of the speakers, thank you.
Thank you, Strider. Seeing no one else on the list, I'm gonna close, uh, first call public invited to be heard, and we'll move on to our study session items, which is a presentation highlighting updates to the organic contract from PRPA. That's a four-way agreement between the city of Longmont, the city of Fort Collins, the city of Loveland, and the town of Estes Park. And welcome Daryl Hahn from LPC.
Thank you, Mayor. You want that one or this one? Let's go with this one. Good evening, Mayor, members of city council, my name is Daryl Hahn, I'm the electric utility director of LPC, good to see you all again. So tonight, I'm going to basically give an overview of, of additional details that are in your packet already, so I won't go into as much detail as what you've already seen. I'll do some quick introductions, talk about some definitions and some level setting, talk about basically background drivers, why I'm here tonight, and again, next week. I'll talk about some highlights of the updates that we're proposing, and then talk about some next steps. So first, introduce myself, I just did that. I'd also like to introduce Sarah Leonard, she is the general counsel at Platt River Power Authority, sitting back here, waving at you and smiling. Sarah has been instrumental in coordinating among the four cities of Platt River and Platt River, including the city managers, city attorneys, utility directors, and council members, Platt River board members, and leadership at, at Platt River. So definitely appreciate all of the work that she's done to help kind of corral the cats here. So just some, some very high-level background, again, this is all in your packet, but just to kind of review, there are two IGAs that we'll be presenting to you tonight, and again, next week for your consideration. One is the organic contract, which is a four-way intergovernmental agreement between us and the city of Fort Collins, Loveland, and the town of Estes Park. So the four municipal owners come together, create an IGA with each other that establishes Platt River Power Authority as an entity. This is kind of the, establishes the constitution, if you will, that establishes the governance structure for Platt River. It enables Platt River to provide additional functions, services, facilities, as long as it's legal for the cities to, to undertake. Currently, this contract expires at the end of 2060. So that's the, that's the thing that creates Platt River. Then, once Platt River is created, the city of Longmont and each of the cities have individual IGAs with Platt River for them to basically provide 99% of our energy needs. Each city has its own IGA, so we'll just be talking about the one with the city of Longmont and Platt River. The terms are essentially identical across the four cities, so in your packet, I believe the, the example that was given was from the Fort, from the city of Fort Collins, but it's basically the same with a few minor differences that are specific to each city. So this ensures that all four cities follow a shared set of rules, so to speak, related to purchasing power from Platt River. So the diagram here, again, on the outside, the blue kind of shows the four cities IGA-ing, if you will, to create the organic contract, and then we have a separate contract with Platt River. So why now? Well, in 2018, as you know, city council and Platt River Board directed staff to pursue a 100% renewable energy goal. Since then, the electric utility industry has changed, not only did we have a pandemic, but business standards, laws and regulations, technology, politics, so much has changed in the last seven years. The current language is sort of of a time, it is very specific, and in some cases, it mandates solutions rather than leaving it open for, for us to kind of, you know, change with the times and use the best technology that makes sense. There's also duplicative language, so in anticipation of potentially issuing bonds and making some investments in the, in the near future, in the next few years, it was decided that this would be a good time to just kind of clean up some of that duplicative language and just make sure that we're really in a good position with these IGAs for the next, you know, 50 years. I'm going to briefly kind of just touch on the highlights here, you know, I talked, I made a big deal about the fact that there are two separate IGAs, right? The organic contract and the power supply agreement. In the next three slides, I'm kind of, just kind of mushing them all together and just giving you some general themes of the changes that are being proposed in those two separate documents. So number one, we're, in, in the changes, we're kind of reinforcing Platt River's, what they call the three pillars, of providing energy that's reliable, cost-effective, and environmentally responsible. As I mentioned before, the electric industry, technology laws, regulations are all changing, and so we want to make sure that the language isn't too specific about technology that was current as of 2018 or even 2025. It removes prescriptive language where it says, where it talks specifically about, you know, renewable energy and uses particular phrases that were. and uses particular phrases that were, um, correct in 2018 but may not be correct in, say, twenty years. Um, it also, um, the changes eliminate repetitive language. Page two of three, highlighting the updates. Again, more broadly, talking about the types of solutions to improve the future flexibility. Um, it talks, um, a little bit about refining the requirements for the second board representative. So as you know, each city, each of the four owner communities has two members on the board. One is typically the mayor or their designee. And the other is somebody that's appointed by you. Um, often, somebody from the electric utility or somebody on the utilities. And so this, um, refinement really just, um, makes sure that the person that you appoint has to be a full-time employee of, of your city and/or an elected member of the governing body. So it could be one of you instead of me. And, um, they'll be selected for their judgment, experience, and expertise, which makes that person particularly qualified to serve on the board. Okay, um, it also cleans up some timelines for the board members. There was some interesting stuff there where somebody might step down um, before somebody new was, was appointed. And then in that in-between, there was a gap. So this just kind of cleans up that gap. Um, and then it, there's also language that reinforces that, um, the board members are there to advocate for all owner communities, not necessarily just the owner community where they're from, because they are a board member of Platte River, which represents all four cities. All right, and the third page of updates, um, again, just minor cleanup things. There were, there were specific, uh, language in, um, in the original documents that talked about having to hand-deliver, paper copies, that kind of thing. And now, in the age of email, um, we're just making sure that there's room in the contracts for that type of, um, communication. Um, there's also language to broaden, uh, the ability for cost recovery. So a lot of times, people just think of rates as the way that, um, say, Platte River would bring in revenue. But there are also some other, um, filing processes, especially once we join, um, uh, SPP, that have to do with recovering rates through transmission. So that's outside of rates. And again, we just want to make sure that that's, that that's a, a possible thing within the new agreements. Minor updates, for example, updating contact, contact information at the utilities. We don't want to have to come back through this process again, just to update a name. Um, and then off-site development of customer-owned resources. So an example here is community solar. We talked a lot about, about those efforts. Um, Hannah Mulroy has been up here talking to you about that as well. The idea here is maybe you want to have one building that's served by solar on another building behind a different meter. And so, again, the, the language has been updated to accommodate and enable that kind of, that kind of construct. So just to briefly look at the timetable, where we've been and where we're going, and the first couple of quarters of the year, um, the staff began the review of both the organic contract and the power supply agreement. Um, there were working sessions with the city attorneys, utility staff and leadership, and of course, the Platte River Board. Um, on June 20th, several of you, um, were up at, uh, Platte River Headquarters to meet with, um, other City Council members, city managers, and attorneys, and utility directors, just to talk about this process. Um, and then, um, so tonight, obviously, September 2nd, here giving you a very high-level presentation. Next week, we will be asking you to, um, review and approve, fingers crossed, the two IGAs that have been updated. On September 25th, the Platte River Board will be looking at just the power supply agreements. Remember, the organic contract is just among the four cities. So Platte River is not technically a party that would approve the organic contract. Um, and then in October, the hope is that, you know, everybody will sign the agreements. So that's all I have for you, but I'm happy to field questions. Um, and I'm happy to, to bring Sarah up if there are any questions that I can't answer that she can.
Seeing none, we can move on.
Great.
Oh, of course. Counselor Popkin.
I just didn't have to be first. I was given a moment. Thanks, Daryl, and thanks for all the work that you and staff and, uh, Sarah and PRPA have put into this. And it was a pleasure hearing kind of all of the work that's gone into that, at that working session that we had in June. Um, I wanted to ask you a question about the, let's see, this is under Article One of the, the Power Supply Agreement. Um, this is Article One, Section A, about the kind of locally rated capacity that's allowed. Um, so just reading from that, "Longmont shall have the right to continue to generate its own power and energy to the extent of the capacity of its generating facilities in service on September 5th, 1974. And they also generate power and energy for its own use from any new generation resources owned and operated by Longmont, provided that the total rated capacity of all such new generations is no greater than one thousand kilowatts or one percent of the peak load of Longmont, whichever is greater." Um, I was under the impression from the working session that we had that we were actually just stripping that language out so that it wouldn't be a capacity limit environment to the point that you were making before of, uh, removing prescriptive language and increasing flexibility. Um, so I was just wondering if you could elaborate more on that, especially as we enter a world more of distributed energy resources, where, I mean, we've already recently talked about the community solar and the batteries being cited in the community. So how does that factor into this overall strategy? And why, and I guess, kind of why is that still relevant here?
Sure, Mayor Peck, members of City Council, Councilmember Popkin. Um, so you probably know that, um, our small hydro facility just outside of Lyons is at about five hundred kilowatts, uh, capacity. So that is grandfathered in. Um, and that, that's included in sort of the, the, the generation that was, that was allowed in. Um, any behind-the-meter generation is also exempted from the, sort of the, the one percent rule, as it were.
Right.
Um, and Sarah can talk more intelligently about this than I can, but really, it has to do with, um, our bonding, um, requirements. And so, um, you know, the, the, in order for us to issue bonds and, and keep the bondholders happy, you know, they really need to have assurances that, that Platte River is going to be able to bring in the revenues, um, in order to, you know, sort of back up those bonds. And so the thought was, if we were to lower that from, say, ninety-nine percent to eighty or seventy or fifty, then, you know, Platte River would no longer be in a position where they could really guarantee to those bondholders the type of revenue that, that would be required.
You're saying from a legal and financial standpoint, in particular, that allowing, say, for instance, Longmont to generate a twenty-megawatt facility locally here into our system, if it could handle it, it would scare away people, like, would, would freak out people who would be holding our bond, like, who would be holding PRPA's bonds? Because they would be afraid that everyone would just stop buying from PRPA?
There's, there's a possibility that it would be a slippery slope, right? So it would be us doing twenty megawatts and then Fort Collins doing forty, and then Estes doing something else. And pretty soon, sort of the guarantee that Platte River had, that they would be able to bring in the revenue, um, would start to, would start to slip away. And so, yeah, there's, there's definitely, uh, a, I don't want to say a requirement, but certainly, um, from our perspective, a requirement to make sure that those bondholders are happy.
From your perspective, as, as a man, like, uh, as the director of our municipal utility here, I mean, in, under, I, I realize that, like, the whole point of PRPA is that we can buy, uh, uh, energy at scale, right? We can buy electricity at a scale that Longmont probably couldn't procure on its own. Um, at the same time, like, there are, as, as PRPA has stated, as LPC has stated, there's real value in kind of distributed energy resources as being a part of, um, the overall, um, integrated resource strategy for PRPA now and in the future for decades. And so I'm just curious, this feels somewhat limiting. And I'm just curious if that's, feels the same way to you.
Not at all. If anything, um, you know, we work very closely with Platte River to do exactly the things that you're talking about. So in, in many ways, you know, the city of Longmont going out and doing it on its own is duplicative. We already have people up in, in Fort Collins at Platte River that we pay to do these things for us. And so for us to then go out and do it on our own, it, it doesn't seem to, to be the best use of resources, because that's what they're for. That's why we created them fifty-two years ago.
So you're saying in that, in that kind of a situation where we had a potentially attractive site opportunity, we would just work with PRPA for them to basically install the infrastructure and kind of run it through our grid in that way?
I don't know that we would necessarily, um, if I would say, in all cases, we would have them install the infrastructure, but we would certainly work with Platte River and the experts that, that they have hired to, to make something like that happen. Especially on a large scale.
Yeah, no, I get that. And, and, under current conditions, the recent commenced construction guidance from the IRS, I think, stated that there's like a carve-out for low-output solar, which is one-point-five megawatts and less. Is that, so considering that, like, it's kind of one megawatt or one percent of the peak load, actually, what is one percent of the peak load?
So our peak load is about a hundred and ninety megawatts. So it's about two megawatts.
About two megawatts, so. So, uh, if, for some reason, there was a strategy to deploy three one-and-a-half-megawatt projects, because it would qualify for certain tax credit incentives right now that a larger system wouldn't, like, is that limiting in any way for this? Or would you just kind of take the same approach and work through PRPA to install that here?
Yeah, I would absolutely still just take the same approach. And we would at least have that conversation with Platte River and figure out the best way forward.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that's not inherently limiting, because it just seems like in the spirit of not being prescriptive and being more flexible, that is like one, one of the small constraints here that I see. But otherwise, it's a, great. If you're not concerned about that, and we think that there's enough of a good working relationship with PRPA, then I appreciate the responses.
I think part of it, to answer the que, that we talked about when we were there in June, was you have the four cities with the organic contract, of which then we have the power supply agreement. Um, and I think the theme was, we have flexibility as long as we're working through Platte River in conjunction with to protect the bonding capacity and these other issues. Um, and I think it was at that point where, I believe Jason was talking and asked the question, I said, "So what I'm hearing is, this is really preventing one of us from putting the four of us in a bad position and then the four of us having to cover the cost exposure because somebody makes a decision by not working with them." And I think that's what Daryl's alluding to is, I think the intent is, we work with each other as we look at opportunities to ensure that we're not negatively impacting someone else in the process.
From a system of power, like, provision here, right? Because I remember that destruct, I remember, I remember that discussion in terms of, like, the rate structures that we're creating. Like, are we incentivizing someone to, a whole community to do something that's counterproductive for the overall system? So is this just another one of those kind of insurance policies?
Yep, and I just looked back and she, and they agreed with what I said. And I think that's really the intent, because you don't want us to build, somebody to build a twenty-megawatt unit. All of a sudden, it adjusts the amount of power and then the rates have to come up. And three cities are now having to cover the rate differential for it because the one city's dropped a twenty-megawatt unit.
Gotcha. So is that where the language then comes in, following that? Which says, uh, "If Longmont develops new generation resources of a total capacity as set forth above, then Platte River commits that it will meet with Longmont to discuss in good faith and increase in that total rated capacity." That's where that, like, would factor into the, let's think about what's the, in the best interest of the system and the communities that we're serving.
Correct.
Cool. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, we have Counselor Christ.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Daryl, I just had some... Thank you, um, Counselor Popkin, for going through all the verbiage. So I'm not going to go back there, but I'm just going to ask some little details that stuck out to me. Uh, for one, I noticed that, um, the idea of providing power at a competitive price was kind of crossed out in favor of just, I guess you would call it flexible language. But there is still the intention of trying to be competitive and keeping rates low. Is that correct?
Absolutely. And so I think the word competitive is, is maybe, maybe not the best phrasing of it. So as, as I mentioned earlier, there are the three pillars. Um, and, you know, ma, making sure that we can keep costs down and provide energy that's reliable and sustainable in the most cost-effective manner is really what we're looking for. Um, if we wanted to go the cheapest, we would not go, um, in the direction that we're going now, right? Uh, we've got the coal plants that are providing very inexpensive, uh, electricity that we can sell on the market and, and really, you know, um, enhance our own rates. Um, and so this is really about just making sure that those three pillars are balanced and, and kind of trying to do what we can, um, on all three, on all three fronts.
Okay. And, um, my, my second question is about, um, the ability for PRPA to create enough energy. And I, I just want to say, you know, we've had recent instances where, uh, for instance, this wasn't PRPA, but Excel, cut power. And, um, I know the city has backup generation systems, you know, because there are some systems where we can't lose power in, in any, in any environment, you know, that you could imagine. I know that, um, there are businesses in the area that are also creating backup systems because they are electric intense and cannot lose power for any short period of time. Is that going to influence how much power we purchase from PRPA? And is that a substantial independent generation that's going to affect this contract, do you think?
Mayor Peck, members of City Council, Councilmember Christ. In general, the customers that you're talking about are looking at, uh, backup generation for relatively short-duration outages. Um, but of course, we might be, um, you know, open to having conversations with customers if they wanted to bring some, um, you know, some generation to the table that fit within certain parameters. Obviously, our renewable goal being a really, a really big part of that. And so having somebody come in with, say, fifty megawatts of diesel generation that was planned to run for, you know, days or weeks or months, that might be a different conversation than if they were to come in with some, uh, more renewable energy. So that's, again, like we mentioned earlier, with having the conversations with Platte River, we would want to have conversations with these customers just to see kind of what, what they're looking at, what problems they're trying to solve.
Well, thank you. That's a nice segue to my third issue, which is, um, or question, is, um, this contract allows for generation from all sources, uh, from PRPA and for, from others. I know we're, um, trying to go carbon neutral. But we did have a codicil regarding aerod derivatives during a dark calm. And I didn't see that included with the contract, but it is still very much in existence. Is that correct?
Yes, absolutely. And so I think that's a really good example where, um, a technology comes along and depending on the studies and kind of what makes the most sense at a given time going forward, you know, the aerod derivatives is the right solution. But in twenty or thirty years, it may not be the right solution. And so the, by, by making the contract a little more flexible, it gives us the ability to be more agile.
Okay, so then, circling around, our governor signed nuclear energy into our Clean Energy Pact. And I'm not saying this is going to happen immediately, but there has been some discussion about small modular reactors as backup sources. And so I'm thinking that actually can produce a lot of energy. And how do you think that will impact our, our position with PRPA? Is that something that they would add on? Or, or is that something maybe that certain industries might have as part of their facility?
My feeling is that that is something we certainly would work with Platte River on. I know right now, the costs are still pretty prohibitive. And so, again, when you look at the three pillars, the affordability piece would, would, would not really be there. Um, and, you know, so, and you're also looking at still, um, some extended timelines to get those up and running. And so from a 2030 perspective, it really doesn't help us. But going forward and kind of looking beyond that, it's certainly on the table. And I think right now, we're just looking at that and other technologies, just to see, again, what makes sense and when, when do those prices down, come down to the point where, okay, now it makes sense to start moving forward to something like that.
Yeah, yeah. And I guess some people see this, um, including nuclear into our energy pact as being the first level of deregulating. I know there's a lot more to go through, but it's a first acknowledgement that maybe we'll be accepting that at some point. So I, I had it on my list. But thank you for the presentation. This was, um, very interesting. I went back and forth. And thank you, Counselor Popkin, for bringing out certain language that I had also been looking at.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So Mayor, we're about to start on the budget and you all kind of went from one meeting to another. If you want a break.
I think we're going to take a break.
It'd be a good time for a break.
Are you going to set our five-minute timer? Okay, we are taking a five-minute break. It'll probably run over five minutes, but I'm going to save five minutes. Yeah, it's aspirational.
Including. All right, good evening, Mayor and City Council, Teresa Malloy, Chief Financial Officer. And with me this evening is Sandra Cifuentes, Budget Manager. We have a number of slides to cover with you this evening. Why is this not working? There we go. So these are the topics that we're going to cover this evening. Harold will be jumping in, I'm sure, as we're going through all of this. And then we also have several staff members behind us who will cover different topics as we get to them. So what we thought we would start with is just kind of an overview of our 2025 budget and how it changed from the time it was proposed to the time it was adopted to today with the additional appropriations. So I'm going to have Sandra cover that for you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Sandra Cifuentes. As Teresa indicated, we're going to go over the 2025 budget before we move into 2026 information. As you all know, last year in August, we came with a 2025 proposed budget, which included 438.1 million of projected revenues, expenses coming in at 469.6 million, which resulted in the use of fund balance of 31.4 million. We came to you in September and October, and there were changes based on new information that was received. Ultimately, at the end of '25, the revised and adopted budget was 441 in projected revenues. This was 2.9 million higher than when we started in August, and that was largely due to the property tax revenue increase. Adopted expenses came in at 473.5. That was the difference of 3.9 million, and that was a result of one-time expenses due to that property tax revenue increase. And then at the end of it all, we ended the, well, the adopted ended up using a fund balance of 32.4 million. The items listed below, it's, they're kind of small, but they kind of talk about the, the different items that made up these differences. As you know, we bring additional appropriations. Now that the '25 is adopted, we typically bring these to you on a monthly basis after the year-end close. These are adopted by ordinance, and there's typically two types of appropriations that you see throughout the year. One of them is the carryover. That's the largest appropriation we have, which carry, carries over budget from last year that is unspent or prior years. And then you have new appropriations that appropriate new needs. These appropriations can include contributions from fund balance, grants that have been awarded and approved by council, any unanticipated unbudgeted revenues coming from donations or reimbursements, and also CAP amendments. So now that it's September, we've brought to you a total of eight additional appropriations so far this year. This includes the carryover that I mentioned that we brought to you in May. The revised budget, including all these additional appropriations, gives us a revised budget of 704.9 million. That is 231.3 million above than the adopted budget. And that 231 million is broken out, again, by the carryover, which is the largest portion of this. 196.9 is carryover dollars, and the new appropriations totaled 34.3 million. This chart just shows you the difference between the new dollars, new appropriations, and the carryover. As you can see, the vast majority is made up by carryover dollars from previous years. And in 2025, the major carryover items that we included, included bond funds, capital improvement projects that are still not completed and we're working to complete, recovery programs, and grants that cover multi-year awards. And with that, I'll pass it back to Teresa.
So I think the, the reason we wanted to start with our '25 budget is really just to show you all and the public that a proposed budget can change between the time that we present it to you and the time that it is actually adopted. And then it certainly, once we get into the first of the year and through the, the year of that, of that budget, it does change over time with additional appropriations. And to point out that the largest appropriation is carryover.
Before you get started, can I call on Matthew as a question?
Yes.
Okay, Councilor Popkin.
Thank you, Mayor Peck, and thank you, Sandra, for that. Just a clarification on the carryover, because it looks like, I realize the different, what the items are, and it looks like it's a huge amount of money and it feels like we're not, like, are we not using that properly? Is that rolling over or carrying over because it's, we're building up a fund for something? Like, what, what is the purpose of carryover funds in general? Like, why is there such a?
Such a large amount.
Yeah.
So by code, we do need to be fully appropriated in order for us to be able to award contracts and bids. So that's why that large amount. And that's made up, I mean, we, we add budget year over year. We're not spending that full budget in one given year until the projects are fully completed, which usually take, you know, multiple years to complete.
So would it be fair to say like the majority of the carryover funds are like infrastructure investments that are probably multimillion, if not tens of millions of dollars in the works that just you accumulate over time, like a, like a savings account kind of thing?
That's correct, yeah. The, the vast majority of that is CAP, so it's capital infrastructure needs that can't be spent fully in, in one year.
Great, thank you.
What you're, so that's a big piece of it. What you're also seeing is if you look at what happened 2014 to 2018, so that, a big part of that's actually recovery funding from the flood. So whether it was FEMA funding, CDBGDR funding, that's money that came in that we were having to carry over to then expend on those projects. You'll see some of it also coming in through Resilient St. Brain and the work that we've been doing there, which is more akin to what you were talking about. And then we also have ARPA funding that we've used over extended periods of time. And so, yes, and when you have this federal funding coming in where you're targeting projects, you're seeing us have to carry it over every year. A large part of that funding, you know, there were some positions that are not positions, there were some term limited work that we did, there was some housing work that didn't occur immediately in year one. So that's part of what you're seeing in this graph.
Great, thank you.
And just to also let you know that in all but one of our funds, our appropriations lapse at the end of the year. And therefore, in order for those funds to be continued to be spent, we have to carry them over through additional appropriation ordinances. The only fund that doesn't lapse by charter at the end of the year is the Public Improvement Fund. So we don't bring you carryover in the Public Improvement Fund.
And for those of us that see other city budgeting processes, not every city has to carry over at the end of the year. Some cities actually can appropriate, so let's say you were going to build a water treatment plant, you can put your funding in that fund, and then you just keep adding to it, but you don't have to carry it over. So that is something that is specific to us, and that's a charter requirement that we have in play. So not all cities do it the same way.
Other questions on that section? We will stop after each of the major topics for questions, but certainly if you need clarification as we're going through, please feel free to interrupt us.
We did see that you have 84 slides.
Pardon me?
You have 84 slides, which I'm not.
There are a lot of slides.
I'm not complaining that.
Some of them will go fairly quickly, others will need to spend a little bit more time on.
And the reason I asked was for council to either hold your questions or make them.
Yeah, yeah, we have, we have a number of slides.
Thank you, Teresa.
Okay, so we wanted to get into our, our 2026 total budget summary by fund for you. And, and again, this is the same presentation you saw with the '25 budget. It's 476.3 million dollars in revenue, 520.2 in expenses, which means we're using 43.87 million of fund balance mainly for capital projects. We will highlight some of those significant changes in a few of the funds for you. It is 9.85% greater than our '25 adopted budget, and it does include over 93 million for our capital improvement program. A few revenue projections for you to start with the sales and use tax. So as you all know, our performance through June is not really looking too great. We, we are up 1.9% in sales tax, but down significantly, 21% in use tax for a combined overall decrease at this point of 1.4%. We will be getting July results hopefully this week, early next week. I will be able to let you all know what that looks like. Prelimarily, though, it, it looks like July of this year is, is holding pretty even with July of last year. So at least we're not losing more ground. We are projecting to end '25 with an overall combined sales and use tax increase of just under a percent. And as Harold has mentioned, our '26 projections is relatively flat. We are projecting to be up just a half a percent in mainly sales tax. We do have some retail establishments that will be opening later this year that will help boost that projection for next year as well as this year. We also are expecting some fairly. We also are expecting some fairly significant development that is in the, in the pipeline that will help in terms of our use tax on building permits. So use tax will still be down, though, so, but not quite as bad as it is currently and where we're projecting it to be through '25. Our sales and use tax does go to the, the five funds, so this is a, a pretty significant revenue for our '26 budget. Property tax. So I, I know Harold has mentioned this, but there were some state adjustments to the assessment rates in both commercial and residential that are, I mean, our property tax overall, we're projecting it to be up, but that is because it is a reassessment year. 2025 is a reassessment year, and we did, are expecting to see some increased valuation due to that, as well as new construction that is now part of the assessment cycle. So overall, our property tax will be up. In permit revenues, so this one is really feeding into our use tax in the general fund as well as building permit and plan review revenue. We, our adopted budget had a, was calling for a combined 820 permits. We think by the end of the year, we will have slightly exceeded that, even though it may not look like it at this point. But there, as I mentioned, there are some projects that are in the pipeline that we do think will pull permits before the end of the year. Projections for '26 are really looking up. We are definitely going to see some, some growth in that multifamily category. One of the things that we have a financial policy for is around incremental development revenue. And basically, our policy says that anything above a permit level of 200 new dwelling units is considered incremental development revenue. Anything up to that 200 level is part of the base revenue. And in incremental development revenue by policy can only be used for development-related one-time or development-related ongoing that is subject to reduction should we fall below that 200 new dwelling unit level. What Harold and I spent quite a bit of time this year looking at was the historical permit levels. And, and what we have really found is that we, the, the 200 dwelling unit level was back in 2008. And since then, we have been well above 200 dwelling units. In your packet, in Attachment C, is the two pages from the Development Services Monthly Permit showing the historical permits, and they've been collecting this revenue since night, or this data since 1974. And it shows a three-year, a five-year, and a 10-year average. And the three-year average is 624 permits, new dwelling units. Five-year is 668 new dwelling units, and a 10-year average of 860 dwelling units. So, so given that the, the averages of new dwelling units far exceeds the 200 base permit level, what we are proposing is that we change the financial policy from 200 dwelling units up to 300 dwelling units. So in, under this scenario, what is considered base revenue is up to that 300 level, and then anything above that would be incremental development revenue. And, and we will bring additional information to you later in our presentations on the use of that incremental development revenue, because there is pretty significant incremental development revenue coming from all those new permits that, that you see up there.
So generally, incremental development revenue, think of it as we treat it a lot like one-time funding in most cases. We do have some positions attached to incremental development revenue, but those positions, when we fund it, we're very clear that, in telling, and it has to be related to development activity. We're very clear in saying if the development activity doesn't meet, those are positions will be cut, you know, associated with that decrease in that development revenue. We've been trying to move some of those positions over into the general fund. We just have not had a, a lot of good budget years. That has limited us having the ability to move it over. Part of the reason why we were using it is coming out of '08. It's taken us a long time to actually get back to pre-'08 staffing levels. But we were also seeing increased activity as it relates to development work. And so the nexus is it's development work creating the IDR. We're using the IDR to fund the positions, knowing full well that at some point, as you reach theoretical build-out and you have no new development coming in, only redevelopment, as you're processing the permits, many, many of those permits will continue. And so you have to have that ongoing revenue source to fund those positions. So that's something we've been trying to chip away at over time.
Okay, so the next revenue we wanted to talk about is marijuana revenues. We have three sources of marijuana revenue. The first one is the 3.53% of just regular city sales tax. And the, the projection for this has been a bit of a challenge, because for a number of months last year, one of the, one of the retail establishments was closed due to a fire in their facility. So if we look at just January through March, when, when the facility, that, that one retail establishment was open, so we had all four establishments open January through March, there was a, a decrease of 13.4% in, in that source of revenue over those three months. And, and so we are definitely seeing a decrease in, in the city's sales tax from, from the marijuana establishments. We also get a state shareback of the state's tax on, on marijuana. Prior to July, we got a 10% shareback on that revenue. Starting July of, of this, last, July of this year, that has decreased to just 3%. So definitely, we haven't, we'll know what the impact of that is when, when we get our July numbers. Still haven't seen all the July numbers yet, but we are expecting a pretty significant decrease in the state shareback of the marijuana revenue. And then the third source of marijuana revenue is what goes into the special marijuana fund. So this is 3% of the, a special retail tax. And half of that goes to the Affordable Housing Fund. That was in the ballot language that was passed by voters. And then council directed that the other half would go to the general fund for mental health and addiction programs. And we are seeing a decrease in, in that revenue naturally as well. So-
Yeah, and so on the special retail tax, council did, we talked about actually utilizing the Affordable Housing Fund, connected to the mental health by, by hiring clinicians that were going to be supportive of people that were living in affordable housing based on eviction prevention and things like that. So council did a while ago, I think we talked about that with you all. So, I mean, it's all really, it is going to housing and mental health, but the, on the housing side, there's a mental health component as well, because we see that as an issue in terms of keeping people housed. One of the things that we wanted to follow up on is that the council retreat, council did have a conversation about the potential of an enclave annexation for those establishments that were in the community that met the definition of an enclave, but were still in unincorporated Boulder County. I think the conversation was generally that we're still serving those, whether it's from a public safety standpoint, the roads that we're using. As we were thinking about that as part of this conversation, we realized we didn't have formal direction from council on this. And so this is something that if council wants to give staff formal direction on that, you're more, you can. It would change some numbers that we look at in the budget in terms of available revenue. But we did not include that in this budget adjustment, because we didn't have specific direction on that.
So do you want direction tonight?
That's council's prerogative. If you want to give us direction to work with grant to proceed on enclave annexation for those establishments, you can do it. We'll talk to planning to have them start the conversation, and then we would actually, if that's council direction, as we're moving through the budget process, we'll calculate what the additional revenue is and then talk to you about that as we get to the end.
Actually, that was one of the conversations we had with Judge Frick as well. So Teresa, Counselor Popkin has a question?
Thank you. Actually, just on that topic while we're on it, is that direction appropriate now or after the presentations?
If you all want to do it now, you can.
It's now, if you would like to make that into a motion.
Great. Well, I would like to, I'll definitely jump on that right now. And, and just for the public's clarity on this, since council discussed it a couple times, build in what Harold was saying, we have a couple dispensaries that are technically within city limits, but are not technically in the city of Longmont jurisdiction, even though we serve them with emergency vehicles, even though we serve them with road maintenance and all of that, trails, depending on which one you're going to. And so because of the policy limitations that have been previously established, that we'd have to change our code a little bit to kind of pull them in, but then they would be actually part of the city of Longmont, and they would be at the same playing field competition-wise as the other dispensaries that are operating already in the city of Longmont technically. It's not changing the number of dispensaries, it's just, that are within city limits, it's just pulling them all in to be treated the same. So with that, sorry? It wouldn't change the, like, it wouldn't add new dispensaries being built in the community. They're already within the city limit, they're already within the municipal boundary. It would just actually allow us to oversee them and have them within our taxing authority. So I would, I will make a motion to direct city staff to, I guess, pursue enclave annexation for those, let's see, what's the, just the marijuana dispensaries?
Unincorporated.
The, thank you. The unincorporated marijuana dispensaries within county enclaves within the city of
It's been moved by Counselor Popkin that we pursue a code change as well as an annexation process for moving the unincorporated marijuana dispensaries that they're, they're in Boulder County, but they're within our city limits. Annex them into the city. That's the motion seconded by Counselor Yarborough. Mayor Protim, Hidalgo Fari?
I have a clarifying question. So we have currently within the city, and we have a max of four. Is that correct? Do we have all four? So we, it's already maxed. Would we have to add in addition, so we would have to change that ordinance or that table to add, or that code to, to add those numbers as well?
Yes.
Okay.
It would almost be a concurrent action, one before the other, where you would have to say, we're adding two, two, so there's four that are adjacent. There's four in the city, there's four that are adjacent to, but only two of those are enclaves. And then as other annexations happen, then the others may be considered enclaves. If it's not an enclave, then it's a different process.
Okay, and so we're really only looking at the two?
Correct.
Okay. And changing the table to say six instead of four?
So if you direct us to do this, we would bring an ordinance back that changes four to six, and then you would do it concurrently.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to know.
Thank you, Mayor. We also, don't we have four additional licenses for hospitality, marijuana hospitality?
Yes.
Well, we approved hospitality licenses, but we didn't approve smoking.
There, there's a, there's an issue with that one, I think that-
Okay, so we need a, a bit of a comprehensive discussion about this when we bring it back.
Counselor McCoy?
Thank you, Mayor Peck. So does your motion include the adding, is that, okay, is that clear to everybody? Just making sure that that's, that's, was part of that, so, okay, thank you.
And to be clear with council, this isn't just the general fund. This is the open space fund, the public safety fund, the transportation fund, and the public improvement fund.
Yes, the city sales tax.
And then also to be clear, like, this is something that current dispensaries operating within the city of Longmont are already paying.
Correct.
So it's, it's treating, it's treating as many businesses on the same playing field.
Correct.
Yeah. Cool. So yes, to clarify, Councilmember McCoy, yes, enclave annexation and code changes as appropriate.
Counselor McCoy, were you finished? I turned off your microphone accidentally. Seeing no other questions in the queue, let's vote. Now passes six to one with Counselor Chris opposing. Counselor Popkin?
Yeah, I had one more question unrelated to that. Thank you. Could we go back to the previous slide for a second on the permits? So I just wanted to make sure, there was a lot of jargon used, and I just wanted to translate this into plain language. So the policy, the incremental development revenue policy that will be proposed at some point, in plain language, is that effectively just changing the baseline so that the annual projections of like staff and services that are provided can be kind of better matched going forward, and it's not treated as like an auxiliary thing? Is that basically what we're talking about?
That is correct.
Mike?
That's correct, Councilmember Popkin. The, the base level today is 200 permits. We're proposing to change that to 300 permits. So the revenue up to that 300 permit level will cover the ongoing budget in development services, which is planning and building inspection both. Anything above that will be used for one-time development-related expenses or the positions that Harold was talking about that are subject to reduction. Should we drop below that 300 permit level?
Or actually, drop two and below?
Yes.
Because the margins can get narrowed, and we still have to eliminate those positions.
Sure. So it's, it's basically enabling more consistent service?
Yes.
Cool. Thank you.
All right, so just to summarize what Teresa went over on revenues, the 2026 proposed budget uses for, or projects 476.3 million of revenues. The chart on the left side just shows you white- budget uses four or projects 476.3 million of revenues. The chart on the left side just shows you what makes up this revenue. So 47% of that is charges for services, 31% is tax, and then 9%, those are the top three categories, is coming from contribution from fund balance. The chart on the right, that's just the 2026 sales and use tax, which is part of that 31% tax increase. And the proposed use of these funds, we are projecting $520.2 million in expenses. The major funds that make up the total expense budget are on the top left chart. So you see the amount and the percentage by fund. Out of this 520 million, the 37% of that is going towards personnel costs, 38% is going to operating and maintenance. We have 9% going to non-operating and then 17% of that is capital. So 93.2 million of that is capital improvement programs. You can kind of see the breakout of the different categories and different project types that will be funded or we're proposing to fund with that 93.2. Transportation was cut off there, but it makes up 41% of that budget.
So when we look at the bottom left category and we look at what goes to personnel expenses, operating and maintenance, non-operating and capital, that's for all funds together. If you go in and you do that breakout for different funds, that percentage for personnel expenses will vary dramatically. So we're in excess of 73%. We're around 73%, 75% in the general fund for personnel expenses. When you look at the electric fund, it's below 30% because so much of their budget is actually what they pay for power directly to PRPA. So I wanted to just give that context to council is each one of these funds will have a different mix in terms of how much is going to personnel expenses.
So could I ask a question?
Sure.
So going back to the last slide, in the transportation, what does transportation involve? Because that looks like a huge part of the budget. On this, on the breakout of the right circle.
Yeah, so a lot of it is capital projects on the transportation side. So they do have some personnel expenses, but when you think in terms of street rehab, I think that number's like 7.3 million. You have, and we'll present this in CIP, you have funds related to the first and main transit station and things like that. So transportation is very capital-heavy.
Okay, thank you.
And this is just a comparison of the 2025 adopted compared to the 2026 proposed budget. The funds that are listed here make up 90.6% of the total expense budget. So we just wanted to show these, the comparison for these.
Any questions so far? No, we were just looking at them and suddenly it went away. Can you bring it back? Thank you. Just a couple more minutes. I see in a lot of these funds, we're actually spending more in 2026 than we did in 2025, even though we are working in a smaller budget. It's interesting. For example, the fleet fund and that's, we're purchasing vehicles. I understand that.
Yep. Fleet fund is definitely vehicles. I think the enterprise funds, it's, it is going to be the CIP.
Okay, yeah.
Funds aren't all experiencing the same headwinds. So if council will remember when we talked about the budget process, you know, we really talked about what was impacting the general fund. So you have the adjustment to property tax, sales and use tax. And so even though it had those headwinds in, we still have additional funding and then we have use of fund balance, but it's, the margins are lower than they've happened versus the enterprise funds. They have different revenue streams coming in. So they, they're going to look different in terms of what, you know, revenue versus expenses is turning out to be. Some of them have rate increases that have already been codified, some have some that you're considering. So really, the, the general fund and the funds that we talk about utilizing sales and use tax, so once again, open space, public safety, transportation, public improvement fund, and general fund, those are the ones that are experiencing the most difficulty in this budget process.
Okay. And I think it's an important distinction as we try to sell this to the public. When they look at the same chart, they probably have some of those say, I mean, it jumps out at you really. So thank you for that. Yeah, councillor Krist.
Thank you, mayor. So it looks like we're reducing the public safety fund a little bit again. If we, if we increase to 300 units for the incremental development revenue, will some of that support the public safety?
Yes.
And is it enough to make up the difference, do you think, or improve it even more?
No, I don't think it is.
No. There is no development revenue that goes to the public safety fund.
Okay, so it's not going to support those positions?
Predominantly sales and use tax and some intergovernmental. We've, we've got some slides to show you on the public safety fund.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll wait for that. Thank you.
Other questions?
Councillor Popkin?
Yeah, just building off of councillor Chris, the enclave annexation for the dispensaries that we just directed, though, that will increase the public safety fund, right?
Correct, because the sales tax on the number of dispensaries will increase.
Great, thank you.
And back to councillor member Chris's question, as we talk about public safety fund, development does, increased development does support all of those funds through sales and use tax. Shifting the IDR number doesn't necessarily support it, but there is a direct correlation between development and the funding that goes into these other funds. Through, through the building process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're going to move into the general fund budget summary then. So the total general fund budget for 2026 is 131.16 million. It is 1.08% greater than our 24 or 25 budget, which is, which is 1.4 million. It is going to use 6.45 million of fund balance for one-time needs. And, and we will present one-time expenses in all funds in a future presentation. The ongoing general fund budget is 123.3 million, which is 3.6% greater than our current 25 adopted budget. So we're going to go through some changes in the ongoing revenues and then we'll also touch on expenses. So our 25 ongoing revenues, we're at 119, just a little over 119, 119 million. We do have some reductions in revenues that is about 2.6 million and about 6.9 million of increases for an overall 26 ongoing revenue of 123.3 million. The major decreases in ongoing revenue is, the biggest one is administrative transfer fees. And I need to kind of explain this one because you're also going to see on the expense side, a decrease in the general fund expenses from moving utility billing out of the general fund. So we have moved the operations of utility billing completely out of the general fund into the utility billing CIS fund. Now that they're getting to the point of having implemented the new CIS system, it, it just makes sense to, to put the operations of that system, i.e. utility billing, in that fund as well. Utility billing is completely covered today through administrative transfer fees from the, the utilities that it's billing for, electric, water, sewer, storm. And so because we're moving those expenses out of the general fund, we're going to see a, a very large decrease in the administrative transfer fee to support it. In the utility billing CIS fund, there will be transfers from those funds, the, the utility funds into the UBCIS fund to support utility billing. But the general fund is now completely out of utility billing as a, as a general fund program. There are also some utility billing.
Let me jump in on this one. This is a good opportunity to kind of talk about what you will see in the general fund. So what's going to happen is you're going to actually see a decrease in headcount in the general fund because it's moving into the utility billing CIS fund. And so as you see us go through this budget and we, when we get and we talk about headcount, there's going to be some unique pieces to it in that there are positions in the general fund that have dedicated revenue sources coming from other funds, or in the case of recreation, dedicated dollars that they have through their cost recovery work that can only be used for things like that. So there's nuances even in the general fund when we look at headcount and what's actually funding those positions versus it just being general fund dollars that go to those positions. And, and so you'll see this in the budget.
Yes. And then there are also some revenues that, that the utility billing process was generating. They are mainly shut-off reconnect fees associated with that whole process. Those are also being moved out of the general fund and into the UBCIS fund. So a reduction of $640,000 of revenue on the general fund side. There's the state marijuana tax, $204,000, essentially from, going from the 10% shareback to the 3%, down to 3% shareback. We are also projecting a natural gas franchise of $100,000 reduction. It's, that, that, that revenue is just very cyclical and it's, it's not coming in the way that we had projected that it would for '25. So, and, and we're projecting that to continue into '26. On the flip side, there is some pretty significant increases, property tax of 3.08 million, 3.8 million. So that is the 2.68 million that Sandra was mentioning was the change between proposed of '25 and adopted of '25, when we got our preliminary assessed valuations from the, from the county. And, and we set that revenue aside in the general fund as one time. So we did not use it to cover ongoing. This year for '26, it is now available as ongoing revenue. And on top of that, we're also projecting 1.2 million of additional property tax revenue. Actually, we're projecting about 1.9 million of additional property tax revenue that's coming from the new assessed valuations, as well as the new construction that I was talking about earlier that is now in that assessment cycle process. We're using, projecting to, or proposing to use 1.2 million of the 1.9 for, to cover ongoing expenses. About 770,000 of that, we're going to set aside. And it's, it's in the budget. We haven't programmed it for anything at this point because we don't know what our final assessed valuations are going to look like. They are still going through, the county is still going through the appeals process. So we do expect that revenue to decrease. We just don't know the extent of that decrease. So we don't want to use it all for, for ongoing revenue and then end up with our final assessed certifications in, in November being short. So 770,000 of that, of the total increases being set aside for one time.
It's, it's not unlike what we did with the 2.6 million. So one of the things that we've been doing coming into budget cycles is instead of fully, we've done it probably the last five years in a reappraisal year, instead of fully bringing all the money into ongoing, we always know that on a non-reappraisal year, we end, the budget's even harder to deal with because you don't have that increased revenue. And so we intentionally do that to help us in the non-reappraisal year. Had we not have done that last year with the 2.6 million and we appropriated it for ongoing expenses, we would only have 1.2 million ongoing in new revenue, max 1.9 if we did it. What that really would have created is a situation that we would have actually been, we would have had to have gone through making $2.6 million in cuts in order to balance the budget. So it's a relatively conservative strategy that we use in budgeting to make sure that we're smoothing the curve out from year to year.
We are projecting a broadband franchise increase, up to 4% of their revenues. So today it is at 2%.
One.
One?
Two.
One.
One, one.
Sorry, 1%. And you are going to see this as a financial policy change as well. So that increase from 1% up to, to 4% is another $715,000 increase. The 0.4% increase in sales and use tax results in about $608,000 in general fund revenue.
Teresa, real quick, we didn't touch on this earlier. I wanted to talk to council about this. And so this is kind of some work that Teresa's been doing in terms of, A, looking back over time and, and mapping the data so that we, we're starting to move into forecasting. The other thing that we did in this case is she talked about some establishments that we know are going to be operating into this year or into the first part of next year. We actually made the decision to purchase a software called Placer. It actually came across as a budget request from another department and we started looking into it. What, what Placer lets us do is if business X is going to locate in a community and we know that business X is in other communities, we can actually go into that system and say, okay, we want to know what kind of traffic went to the location of business X when it went to Brighton? And what did it look like when it went to Golden? We then can take that data to then start really refining estimates in terms of what that's going to look like in terms of revenue generation. So a lot of times when we talk about this world, we talk about cannibalization in that if this opens, then this is going to do this. It actually also then allows us to go, well, if they're relatively the same and it opened in the same community, you can actually look at the traffic data going into those two locations to see if there's a decrease in this one while there's an increase in this one. So that's really utilizing technology to get more refined in terms of how we're starting to evaluate these budget estimates. So that's a new process that we're starting to bring into the budget this year.
And Harold, did you want to talk about the logic behind the broadband franchise?
Yeah. So one of the things, the other utilities actually have franchise fees. We, you know, when we went in and created Next Light, obviously it was a new startup. And so we knew starting off, we needed to be really careful with that. We've obviously seen the success. So it really is to treat the utilities in the same fashion. I mean, treat them water like broadband and so on and so forth within our budget. You know, that really. You know, that really goes kind of tying into some other traditional general fund expenses is use of the right of ways in terms of what's running in alleys, what's running in streets, what's running in those areas. And that really is the nexus for the franchise fee because if you go in and work in a street, that has an expense on the transportation fund and the general fund related to those expenses. So that's the logic behind that.
Can I ask a question about that broadband fee? So when you get franchise fees from Next Light, does, do they stay in the Next Light budget or do they go to the general fund?
It's in the budget and Next Light has an expense and it's in a revenue line item in the general fund.
Correct.
Okay.
That revenue is a general fund revenue.
Okay, thanks.
We also have about $470,000 of recreation revenue increases. This is coming really from a few different sources within recreation. We are proposing to add a second day camp, which will generate quite a bit of revenue. We are also projecting there will be some slight fee increases. And then another $75,000 of that 471 is being additional revenue that will be generated because we are no longer, we're going to be covering the employee rec passes out of the employee benefit fund. As opposed to right now, it's just lost revenue that recreation is not recovering. So recreation's going to recover the revenue. The expense that revenue is going to be paid to recreation out of the employee benefit fund. So that's about $75,000 of that 471. And I I will point out that this is in 2026. It is the first time that recreation, from a budget perspective, will hit the 80% cost recovery in their by financial policy since COVID. They have really struggled to to meet that financial policy of 80% cost recovery. So finally getting up to that 80% cost recovery since COVID.
So so some context behind this and and you go, well, why are you funding certain things? When they made the pitch to us about the additional summer day camp, basically, when they put the summer day camp out for people to sign up, it fills up in a day. And when you take the expenses associated with the summer day camp and then you look at what the projected revenue is based on the charges for attending, I think it was netting out about $100,000. Was it about $100,000, Jeff? Over $100,000 after expenses. So you're going to see headcount add in the general fund, but the headcount's actually being funded by the expense and they're making over $100,000 of revenue to bridge that cost recovery gap. Some other context, and and Jeff has been a dog on a bone with this one and and talking about it. And and I actually appreciate it because when we talk about the the rec passes, the rec passes are really there from a wellness standpoint, meaning if people take advantage of the rec pass and and they're and they're going, then that's going to improve the claims experience on the health fund. Well, historically, they've just been eating that cost. Whereas if it was someone else that was buying it, they would have to pay the money. So we're actually paying the value of the rec passes out of the wellness, health and wellness fund because that's the fund getting the benefit. And that's also a part of what's making this adjustment. So I think it's really looking in depth in those financials and balancing the system out.
We also have some traffic camera fine revenue increases with those cameras coming online. We are projecting an increase in that revenue. And then the electric franchise will also see an increase due to prior fee adjustments.
Also, let me give some context on the traffic camera funds. I know when we brought this out, everybody's like, well, it's a way to generate revenue. Does it generate revenue? Yes, it does. It really was a traffic safety issue that we were trying to deal with. The numbers we're using are just based on, we added delay in implementation of the traffic cameras, but now as they're being implemented, I think one was on Mountain, Mountain View, maybe. In a couple of days, I think it was like a couple of days, 119 people that were going over 10 miles an hour on the speed limit. And so this is not, this is just us responding to what we're seeing occur within the community. Ideally, we would make no revenue off of this because people aren't speeding and they're not running the red lights. The reality is, well, and it's interesting, I would tell you. So I'm I'm the victim of this in Fort Collins with my kids. They can't seem to figure out and they keep getting hit by the same cameras. But it's starting to resonate and we need to be careful. And and so I think what it's telling us is we have a speeding problem and we have a red light problem, people running red lights. And that's really what this is about. I don't want it to get lost in a revenue conversation. We have problems.
Okay, so moving on to the ongoing expense in the general fund. So starting with that same 2025 ongoing expense of 119, ongoing revenue, ongoing expenses balancing here, we have some reductions as well as some increases and to get to our total 2026 ongoing expense of 123.3 million. So two major decreases make up the the overall reduction that you saw on the previous slide. Of course, utility, moving utility billing into the UBCIS fund. That's a $2 million reduction in our ongoing expenses. And then we've got two essentially development incentives that we have moved out of ongoing. And the first one is 130,000 that has been part of our ongoing budget for many, many, many years that was for the final phase of the old Butterball Turkey Plant. And what we, that's just been in our ongoing budget, not being spent for several years. And and so what we have done is reduce it, remove it from the ongoing budget in 2026. We're going to have accounting reserve it as a as a reserved fund balance for when we win and if we do ever need it, we'll have it. No reason it was in ongoing. So I don't know, Harold, do you want to?
Yeah, I think the simple ways, we're almost treating it as one-time funds where we actually put it in a one-time funding category versus utilizing it as an ongoing, which sort of limits what we can do with the money.
Yeah. And and the second one is that makes up the 662 is about $530,000 for the Smucker's Business Personal Property Tax that was in our ongoing budget. We are moving that to one time. So it is still in our '26 budget. It's just not ongoing, it's now one time. And just to give you a little bit of history on where we're at with the the Smucker's Business Personal Property Tax, 2025 is year six of an eight-year incentive for their first phase of of that development. And we're in year two of an eight-year incentive for Phase Two. And the the incentives were for the for the full eight-year incentive, the first four years was 100% rebate of all their business personal property tax and 50% of the following four years. So so 2025 is is the first year that we have Phase Two at 100%. But Phase One is now at 50% of a of a business personal property tax. That's around $530,000. So move that into a one-time perspective because after we're through the eight-year cycle, it will go away. We will not, we will not owe them any further rebate. All the business personal property tax will be revenue to the city.
And to be clear, we didn't use any existing funding for that number. The funding's being generated by Smucker's. So had they not have come in, we would not have any of that money. I mean, it really, it it's connected to their investment. So I think sometimes people don't quite get how we structure these contracts. And so simply, kind of what we say is, well, 100% is zero, zero. So if they don't show up, even if we got 100% of it, we're not getting anything. So this is because of their investment, we're getting it and we get the money. And then over time, where it moves into the ongoing budget.
And then we have several increases in ongoing expenses in the general fund over 1.9 million dollars from Level One. Again, being driven by just cost increases in things that we really have no control over, contracts, utilities, those types of increases. We do have, I know Harold previously said that we were unable to fund any Level Two. We did fund job audits. And that is the only thing that he had mentioned that that we did fund from Level Two. That was $113,000 worth of of job audits, several audits. It's not, it's it's multiple positions.
So for those of you all that, again, managing jargon here, job audits are basically when we evaluate what somebody's doing. And then when we look at what is in their job description versus what they're doing, we're finding that there is a difference. And so then we're we're saying we have to fund those positions based on the work that they're doing. Correct, Joanne? And that really starts falling into like equal pay for equal work and how we look at those issues. So same person, it's just that the job description's changing.
The complete list of the Level One and Level Two ongoing for all funds was included in the budget document in the Council Com as well as in the the budget message. There is a link that that will take you directly to that section of the budget document if you want to look at all of the Level One and Level Two. We also are seeing or have an increase in the level of human service agency funding. This comes from the increase in the property tax of 1.2, really 1.9 because it is calculated on the full property tax increase as well as the increase from the franchise fees and the sales and use tax. So so that is seeing a bump for '26. Another shift in staffing that we made in the 2026 budget is to take all of the communications staff that had previously been paid for directly out of the utility funds. We are kind of doing the opposite of what we did with utility billing. We are moving them into the general fund and they are then offset by an administrative transfer fee. So that's an increase of $604,000. Fleet lease is a is a very significant increase for us for for 2026. And this is really being driven by the Take Home Car Program for Public Safety. And and the reason that we're seeing such a significant increase in '26 is because of the the plan was to to purchase. We funded them over a three-year period. They were intended to be purchased over those three-year period, over that three-year period. And had that actually happened, this increase would not be as significant as it is. But because of supply chain issues mainly, those vehicles were not purchased as we had originally planned. Most of the purchases for those vehicles happened towards the tail end of last year and even into the first part of this year. And so since those vehicles were not actually in service until this year, essentially, the O and M and depreciation did not start until those vehicles get put into service. So so that 1.2 million is really hitting us all in one year, whereas we had originally planned it to to hit us over a three-year period. So so that was a huge increase for us this year or for for next year. The other, Harold had talked about the 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 kind of flip-flop that we did between the general fund and the public safety fund to help balance the public safety fund. We took 11 higher-step police officers out of the public safety fund, moved them to the general fund and did the opposite. We took 11 lower-step officers out of the general fund and moved them to the public safety fund. So no change in total FTE between the funds. We're just kind of shifting higher for lower step positions to help budget that public safety fund. That was about $445,000. And then the the biggest increase, $2.5 million for collective bargaining pay increases. This is year 2026 is year two of their two-year contract that guaranteed them a three, roughly 3.25% increase. And it really is just getting them up to up to market. They had gotten quite far behind market when we had the prior three-year agreement. Market just moved faster than than the pay increases that they were guaranteed in those three years. So this is bringing them up up to market.
So the collective bargaining, is that both fire and police?
It is both.
Okay, thanks.
This 2.5 is both.
Okay.
As well as the the new RHS plan that we that they negotiated for last year, that continues that. And a year two of a two-year 457 contribution for fire, that is included in that 2.5 million dollars as well.
And it's not, I mean, it's police and fire primarily. Dispatchers are also covered by the collective bargaining agreement. There is some CSOs that are included in the agreement. So the bulk of them are certified police and fire, but there are other groups in that agreement.
Okay, so that is really the general fund at a high level. I'll stop there before I move into the general fund fund balance.
Any questions or comments? It looks like we're good.
Okay.
You're explaining it very well.
Quickly, want to talk about our general fund reserve policy. So this is the, this is where we're at for 2025, both from a policy target as well as our current funded reserves. Tabor, the essentially unused portion of the of the general fund fund balance and unused merely because Tabor requires, if you have to use this for an emergency, you have to replenish it by year end. So it's at $7.1 million, it's essentially an untouchable reserve because there is no way we could replenish that by year end. And then the second component is just an 8% emergency reserve.
I just wanted to make sure I heard that correctly. You're saying if we were to like allocate some of that 7.1 million
Essentially.
Now for, say, like, new speed cameras or speed bumps or something like that? We'd have to replenish it by the end of the calendar year or the end of the fiscal year or both?
The end of the calendar fiscal year.
So we'd have to come up with that money to fill it up. So it's really like a very temporary Band-Aid if that.
Yes.
I think the the best example is if we had a flood that was bigger than what we had that required us to dip into the reserves. If we used it, we have. If we used it, we would have to replace it by the end of the calendar year, which inherently, from a reserve perspective, makes it unusable. Because if you're in a situation where you have to draw down on that much money, you've got...
Yeah, it'd be different if it was like the next year.
Bigger problems you have to deal with. Which then leads to the need for an emergency reserve and then the stabilization reserve because then those are actually what become functional.
So this is $7.1 million the City of Longmont has that we really can't use for anything?
Correct.
Cool.
The 8% emergency reserve is touchable, but it takes a supermajority of council for us to tap into that. And then the stabilization reserve is the one that we've been, you know, discussing with you in terms of tapping into to help bridge our sales and use tax issue for this year. We are projecting, well, as of the end of June, we were projecting we may need to use approximately $2 million of that. I really do think our July sales and use tax numbers are going to look better. And so we may not need the full $2 million, but there is $7.7 million in that portion of the reserve. And then going into 2026, this is what the reserve would look like. So this assumes no use of the stabilization reserve. So whatever we end up having to use of that really comes off the top of these numbers. The Tabor reserve gets calculated at the end of the year. So in April of '26, we'll be calculating the new Tabor reserve for '25's year-end. So these numbers that are shown here are just the same numbers that you see on the prior slide for '25 because we haven't calculated it yet. We've got to complete the fiscal year-end in order to calculate that. I do expect it to go up though, but by how much, we don't know. So the 8% reserve is, this is 8% of the ongoing general fund proposed budget. And then we have not, in, as part of the budget, we have set aside $3.5 million of fund balance from our fiscal year '24 year-end that we will contribute to. It'll help fund the increase in the Tabor reserve. It'll help fund the increase in the 8% emergency reserve. And then we're projecting, assuming we don't need to use any of the stabilization reserve, with that $3.5 million, we could get a stabilization reserve that is fully funded at the 8% level. So again, assuming no use of stabilization reserves, we could be going into '26 with a completely fully funded general fund reserves at the highest level for the first time.
So I have a question. It brings me back to the RTD reserves. Why are we needing to fund them 100%?
Well, that is our financial policy.
Okay.
So I think there's, we're funding it, we said, on the stabilization reserve, 3% to 8% of our total budget. So funding it at 100% to meet the 8% requirement. I think the RTD example is their reserves are 100% of their total budget.
That's the difference.
That's the difference in this.
Okay, thanks. I do have another question though, and this is, do we not have, at one time, the city had their own in-house financed health plan? Do we not have still money in that plan? And where would that be held? Is it in one of these reserves? Is it a different plan? And how much money is in that?
It is the Health Benefit Fund, and we do have some slides on that one as well.
Oh, thank you.
We'll get to that one for you. Any other questions on the reserve before we move on?
I think we're good.
Thank you. All right, now we're going to move into the Public Safety Fund. Just a high-level budget summary on the Public Safety Fund for you. The original public safety tax was approved by the voters in 2006. Starting in 2007 is when we first collected this tax at the 0.325% level. And then in 202017, it was increased to what it is today, the 0.58% level. Our '26 total budget for the Public Safety Fund is $20.78 million. It is in total $300,000 less than last year. And it may be a little deceiving because our ongoing budget in the Public Safety Fund is increasing by $549,000. And I have another slide that I'll show you that you'll see where these increases are coming. The overall decrease is not due to ongoing budget. It is really from the one-time budget. There was $1.5 million of one-time funding in '25, and we are only proposing one-time funding of $763,000 for '26. So that's where your total reduction in the fund is coming from. Okay, so major ongoing revenues, a total of $18.7 million of sales and use tax, a slight increase from 2025 due to our projected revenue increases there. There's $1.7 million in intergovernmental. Predominantly, this is coming from St. Green Valley School District for the SRO program. Most of our SROs are in the Public Safety Fund. But there is also some grants and other intergovernmental revenue that we'll receive in this fund as well. $160,000 of firing range revenue. And then major ongoing expenses, again, the $445,000 that we moved out of the Public Safety Fund into the general fund. So that was a reduction in ongoing expenses. But then we had an increase in ongoing expenses from Level 1, ongoing additions. And again, that full list is in the budget document. And fleet lease, $883,000 of ongoing expense. And this is being driven by the same Take Home Car program that I was talking to you about in the general fund.
We have a question from Councilor Popkin.
Yeah, super quick here. When we were talking about the dispensary annexations before, I think early in the year, you run some back-of-the-envelope numbers, Harold, on like what we potentially expect, what we potentially expect to get from that that would go to the Public Safety Fund? Do you still have that on the top of your head?
No, we'll have to bring that at another budget presentation because I know we talked about it, but we...
Do you remember if that was on the order of magnitude of like tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands, 20,000, million?
Do you all have that?
No.
Let us bring that back. We'll put that as a question.
Cool.
I don't want to shoot low or high.
No problem.
And so, and I can't remember.
Definitely, I'm going to shoot high on that one.
So we definitely have some challenges with this fund. As we've mentioned, the main revenue is sales and use tax. And so this fund is really tied to the health of the economy and more so than probably any other fund that we have, other than the Public Improvement Fund. But that fund is not really covering ongoing expenses. It's capital expenses. So we have a little bit easier ability to adjust in that fund as opposed to this fund.
So from context for council that may or may not have been here when we created certain agreements. So the funds that Teresa's talking about, these are restricted sales and use tax funds. So for example, when we did the Costco project, that's coming from the 2% non-restricted. So all the funds that they pay in sales tax that is generated from retail, if it's incentivized, 100% of those funds go to the restricted funds. It's only the 2% non-restricted fund that's doing it. So you're seeing a bit of a benefit for some of these other funds when we make these agreements because they're not participating in whatever the development agreement is. All funds, to Teresa's point, are impacted by the health of the economy. Transportation, open space, public safety, and public, they're all impacted by the health of the economy. Why the transportation fund and the open space fund are a little different is they're capital-intensive or there's money for acquisition of property. So it makes it easier to make decisions on, maybe we slow this project down. Maybe we don't do this acquisition. Versus the Public Safety Fund, a lot of ongoing expenses are in that because it was designed to create capacity for ongoing expenses. And so that's the difference where the pressures on the Public Safety Fund are more significant. And they don't have property tax behind it like you do in the general fund and all the other revenue sources. So that's why we're moving. And technically, you can move from the Public Safety Fund to the general fund, but then coming from the general fund, you can't move from the general fund to the Public Safety Fund in the way that it was created. So there's other rules that are in place.
Yeah. So 82.3% of total expenses and 85.4% of the ongoing expenses are people in this fund. Their attachment E in your council communication, in your packet, is a 10-year pro forma for this fund. We are projecting to end 2026 with a $4.3 million fund balance. So we have been drawing down on that fund balance predominantly to fund additional unexpected costs for safety and justice rehab. Those were additional appropriations that you all approved. '24 and then into '25 has drawn down on that fund balance. The, it's just a struggle. The 3% sales tax growth that we are using in the pro forma does not keep up with, is not sufficient enough to keep up with the level of ongoing increases in that fund. So this fund is definitely a challenge for us. All right, so I'm going to stop there and see if there's any questions.
Any questions or comments? Saying no?
Okay, we're going to move into compensation and benefits, and Joanne is going to come up and present that to you.
So, good evening, Mayring Council. Joanne Zias, Chief Human Resources Officer. Just want to give you a little bit more information on our compensation and benefits. I know Harold talked about that briefly at our budget introduction last week. This is our compensation philosophy, and it has been this way for quite some time. Our philosophy is that we're going to strive to pay competitive prevailing market rates. And that's to make sure that we're doing wisely with taxpayer dollars, but that we're also making sure that we're able to attract and retain qualified staff to get our projects done and to provide services. In 2017, we made a philosophy change to pay at 102% of market. And that came as a result of taking a look at cities near us. And what we found is that we were similarly staffed, but we were providing a lot more services than those cities. So if you think about things like sanitation or library services or next light and those types of things, we were not accounting for those additional services when we were looking at our staffing levels. And so we do ask our staff to do more with less. And so that 102 was an acknowledgement of that in some small way. In taking a look at our philosophy applied to 2000, in applying it to 2026, our recommendation is to pay at 101. So our goal is still going to be 102. But to make sure that we're able to balance our budget, 101 is where we're at at this point. That is a bit of an increase because we were not able to do that in 2025. We were still working our way through a salary survey, and we had us set it 100% last year. We also just took a look at our benchmark data. We had completed the salary survey last year, and that was a two-part survey because of the fact that we were working through some of the data needs. We do have the data all there, so all we did is update it this year. We updated our midpoints to make sure that we had all of our current midpoints correct. If it was below the target range, we increased it. If it was above the target range, then we did decrease that target range. This is some information about where our municipal positions are. So we really try to take a look for primarily municipal positions at the market near us. And so we look at cities that are a little bit smaller than us, a little bit larger than us, and bring those in and make that the market. We, for positions that have private data, then we also incorporate private data. Pay factors is the primary data piece that we use for our municipal information. And we do have all of our cities participating in that, so we are able to get it. And where applicable, we do incorporate that private data. This slide talks about where that private data comes from. We do use a Mercer database. We use Willis Towers Watson. We do use pay factors, and we use Mercer as a healthcare survey for applicable positions. So we make sure that we're going to the data that's going to be the most appropriate for those roles. And we actually go position by position and say, what is the benchmark for this position? And we establish the benchmark job by job.
So Joanne, I don't know if you mentioned this. Pay factors is an interesting shift for us because historically, we'd use mountain states. And the participation by cities was varied at best. The distinction in pay factors is most of the cities in the metro area, I believe, are now utilizing pay factors.
Correct.
And so we're getting really good data sets from all of the cities in the metro area and the front range.
Yeah, what we were seeing in the past is that you would have years that certain cities would participate, and then other years that they would not. And so the data would go up and down depending on who happened to answer it that year, whereas pay factors is normalized for us. If we have anything with national data, then we are putting a geographical differential on that. We do use 10% for that because what we're finding is that our compensation for the state of Colorado and the Denver Boulder area is requiring that to make sure that we're at the local rate as opposed to being at the national rate and too low. We do match to the 50th percentile of the market, so we're always looking at the range. We're not looking at individual salaries except in a few individual cases where we need to do that.
Does council, when we talk about 50th percentile, is that clear what we're saying for everyone? Okay, for the public, what that means is we basically take the low to the high. We average the number, and the number that comes out in the middle is how we're establishing market. So what we typically pay, average. I mean, and it's a way to translate the 50th percentile. So we're not the lowest, we're not the highest. We're right in the middle of the market.
Yep, and we're looking at pay ranges as opposed to looking at anyone's individual salaries. For our non-bargaining positions, what we've found this year, and this is the first time that we've actually found this, after doing the salary survey, we were pretty aligned with market in many positions. And so what we do have is some positions, about a third of our positions, that have an increase in their salary range. We also have a significant amount that have stayed the same or the range has actually not gone up as we had projected. So we needed to bring that range down a little bit. And so with that, we're not really recommending any additional market movement this year. What we're going to recommend is that we move up to 101%, but we're not changing that data to make it higher to account for next year. We're also recommending that we continue the exceptional pay budget. That is a year-by-year dollar amount that individuals earn. They are recommended for that. We review those on an individual basis, and then they're awarded that for the next year. It does not continue on to the next year unless they earn it again that following year. For special positions, and this is the collective bargaining positions, Teresa talked about this a little bit. We are in our second year of a two-year CBA. And so with that collective bargaining agreement, we're just recommending that we continue those agreed-upon rates. we're just recommending that we continue those agreed-upon rates. With LPC, those are step positions. So, we do keep those on a step structure. Those are really the only positions we do that outside of collective bargaining. And the reason we do that is because that is what the market is. And so, to make sure that we're competitive and we're able to move people through that learning and through those experience levels, we keep them on step.
Oh, thank you. Is when you say like a different market, is that because we're comparing LPC on like a utilities market?
Yes.
So, they're just like a different grouping altogether, basically, of comparison?
Not altogether. This is the step position is for the linespeople. And because that is where that is the market, they move on a step basis. So, not holistic to LPC, but the linespeople.
Cool, thank you.
Aside from compensation, just some information on benefits. We are continuing with Kaiser this year. We have an 8% for our HMO plan, and we have a 10% increase to our PPO plan. Those were negotiated last year as part of our RFP process. And given our experience rates, we did have a rate cap, and we're utilizing that rate cap. So, we are not making any plan changes for '26. We do have a rate cap offered for '27. We will see if we use that just depending on if there are other options for our healthcare. For our vision care, we have been with VSP for quite some time. We actually were able to get a decrease on this. And so, it is going down by 8.9% for exams and 11% for examined material. We have a four-year rate guarantee on that, so that will not change for the next four years.
So, when we talk about the Kaiser healthcare, so we pay 100% of the healthcare cost for our employees. Where the increase shows itself is when you're, I think it's employee and spouse and employee and family. And we spent some time looking at this. And what we're finding within our total employment numbers is we have some people that take the employee plan, and that's all they take. Some people don't take the employee plan. Some people are on employee and spouse, and some people are on employee and family. So, when we started looking at this, I think in the past, we have used the health fund to manage some of that cost. But what we realized is there's a large number of people that don't have family and spouse on it, which means if we were to do that, then what do we do for them? And so, we held true to just to the increase. So, on the employee's side, we pay that cost, and that cost on the DHMO is what we pay. If you choose the PPO plan, then you get the value of the DHMO, and then you pay the difference.
So, what fund does that come out of? General?
Health fund. Health Benefit Fund.
Okay.
So, we pay into that, and then we pay out of that.
Okay.
We have Delta Dental for our dental care. We do not have a rate increase for that, and we're in year two of a two-year rate guarantee. So, we'll see what that looks like next year. For Minds and Associates, we were able to get a flat renewal. And they've been doing a really great job with our EAP, so we are gonna continue to provide our EAP services through them. Just going forward in the future, we are gonna continue to take a look at our benefits. We're anticipating keeping the philosophy for compensation and just making sure that we're reviewing our benefits to ensure that there's some best value for that, that we have a good cost proposition and that we're able to meet our needs. We're always taking a look, especially at our health plan, just to make sure we have the right health plan, that there is not anything that gives us the best cost benefit aside from that. And we will continue to do that. For compensation, we're gonna continue to work towards that 102, and that is our target as conditions allow. That is as much as I have for compensation benefits. Any questions on those?
I don't see any. Teresa? All right, we're gonna move into the pension plans then. So, starting with the old hire, fire and old hire police plans. These are closed plans. Not very many members and/or beneficiaries remaining in these plans. Both plans are fully funded. The fire plan more funded than the police plan, but they are both fully funded and have been fully funded for several years now. There is no additional contribution that is required to these plans for 2026. And we are recommending a benefit increase of 2% because they are fully funded. Attachment E in your packet is the actuary presentation that was given by our actuary to the retirement boards. Moving into the defined benefit plan for our general employee retirement plan, also known as GERP. This plan has quite a bit of history in the council communication that we went through. It was fully funded prior to 2008, but the economic downturn in 2008 moved it into an unfunded status. And then, there were some actuarial changes that really continued that unfunded status for this plan over a couple of years. The fund is, it is 84.3% funded with an unfunded liability of $42 million. So, Tabor, really Tabor dictates that we cannot give a pay increase to the retirees because this is an unfunded plan. And our employer contribution, required contribution per our actuary study is 8.6%. However, in our 2025 budget, we had been contributing 9.4%. And so, we are going to continue that 9.4% contribution to this plan to try to make some ground on this, make up some ground on the unfunded status of the plan. The city has, over prior years, has made some additional one-time contributions to this fund from the Employee Benefit Fund, which is had and still does have, and you'll see that in a little bit, a pretty healthy fund balance. And so, we have been able to make contributions, transfers from that fund into this fund to try to really make some ground on that unfunded status. The actuary is projecting that this plan will not reach a fully funded status until 2044. So, quite a number of years before they are projecting that it will be at a fully funded status again.
So, context on this, you see some of our retirement funds over 100%. You see this one at 84.3%. If you look at different state funding systems, they're in different places. I think for context, I'm looking at Para. Their funding status is 69.2%. So, it gives you a sense, oh, wait, really hit a lot of pension funds.
84% is really good.
So, I mean, when you're looking at this number, 84% is good. There are some public systems that are over 100. It depends on the structure of that.
So, in addition to those plans, the police and fire retirement plans in 2022, the, both police and fire did negotiate to move back to FPPA, to their pension system. And although it was optional, not all police and fire employees chose to move back to an FPPA plan. So, that first, the city-defined contribution plan is the city's plan that all police and fire were in prior to the move back to FPPA. And we do still have a fair number of both police and fire in that city plan. And then, several of the employees did move to one of the three FPPA plans. All new hire, police and/or fire employees are going into the FPPA-defined benefit plan. So, our city-defined contribution plan is also a closed plan. No new members are becoming in that plan. They are all in the FPPA-defined benefit plan. And FPPA does really dictate what the rates will be for those plans. Our city-defined contribution plan, contribution remains the same at 12.10%. That's what it is today. The two, two of the plans for FPPA had a slight increase, and that is for the reentry employees and the post-21 employees. So, slight increases in contribution rates for those two plans. The hybrid plan is the same as it is today. So, those are the rates that we had to budget for the city's share of these retirement plans. Okay, so, onto the health benefit fund then. Our, the health benefit fund, there is attachment H is an operating statement for this fund. And it really provides the details of the revenues and expenses and shows you the fund balance for 2024, what we're projecting for '25, and then what we're projecting for '26. The council column also has some history of this fund over the past few years. But basically, our 2026 proposed budget does include those increases that Joanne was just speaking about in terms of the Kaiser increases. The city contributions to the employee, the health benefit fund, remain at 14.5%. That is sufficient to continue to fully fund that fund and cover all of the expenses. And there are some additional costs beyond the actual benefit, the provision of health benefits that this fund covers. It also includes the life insurance and long-term disability as well as EAP that Joanne was speaking about. And then, in addition to that, this fund has been covering, as Harold mentioned earlier, the wellness incentive for employees. It has been and continues to cover police and fire physicals. This $70,000 estimate is an increase because fire did request additional annual increases to physicals for firefighters. And so, this fund will cover that increased cost. Public safety counseling program, this is currently being covered by a grant. However, historically, the health benefit fund has covered, when we don't have grant revenue, has covered the costs of these. So, we are projecting about $90,000 to come from this fund if we don't receive grants that will cover this. So, that's kind of just a placeholder, just in case we need it. There's the employee rec pass that I was talking about earlier. We'll be covering that expense from this fund. And then, they knew a program that is actually started this year that I'm gonna have Harold speak a little bit more about because he knows about this program better than I do.
Yeah, so, the Sigma Tactical Program is something that we actually learned about from our public safety team. And it's a process that they're going through to evaluate what is actually the risk of someone in having a heart attack. And I wish I could get into all the science, but there are certain markers that you can test for that actually tell you what is your likelihood of having a heart attack. If you understand, if you get into the health world, you know, they talk about the Framingham Index, which is really something that says if you don't have negative numbers in this category, then you're not eligible to get this advanced testing to see if you're gonna have a heart attack. So, using me as an example, overweight issues, but all of my biometrics were like, good. So, you couldn't get that testing. What they started finding in the public safety arena is that they started doing this testing because there's a lot of science out there that really is talking about stress, stress relation to heart conditions, you know, how long you're working, all of these issues. And what they do is they actually do a test or they actually do a more comprehensive blood work on you. And they're looking at a specific factor that typically shows, I think the number they use is 123. If you're above 123, it means that your body's already producing the thing that accounts for the production of plaque in your arteries. In addition to that, they do a sonogram of your artery in your neck to see what is, does it look like from a blockage standpoint there? Because there's a high correlation that if you see plaque blockages in your artery, what that's gonna look like in your heart. And then, they run you through a VO2 light test where they have you connected to an EKG machine. And so, then they review this data, and they kind of say, here's where you sit on your current condition. Now, what's interesting, when they shared this data with us, it is what they're finding is in some ways scary. So, if you look at the life expectancy of a police officer, I think they said 64? 54? Average life expectancy. And you're seeing this, but you're, we're also seeing other trends within just the organization generally. And they're finding some really unique results where they're finding people younger and younger that are actually already producing plaque. They're identifying people, like the example they used, it was really interesting to me, was one guy that they tested, his diet was, as they said, barbecue beer and cigars. His traditional metabolic panel was off the charts, but when he did this test, he was fine. There was another guy who was, as you would probably say, someone who's similar to a triathlete, had vegan diet. His numbers weren't. So, they're starting to get then the genetic component of this. And so, for me, there were a couple of things. One, I will tell you, since I've been here, I've seen way too many examples of people who retire from this organization, and within a year, they're having a heart attack and passing away. We've had a number of people in this organization who have had heart attacks while they're employed. And as I said before, our people are our most important resource. So, let's take that side of it and go, how do we take care of our people? Now, let's look at the financial side. One serious heart attack, like significant heart condition, where people end up in the ICU can very quickly exceed $1 million. Mid-level heart attack, half a million dollars. Low level, you're in 100,000 to 300,000 range, depending on what you're going through. If we can get ahead of this early. Both, there's the human element to what we're trying to do for our staff members to say, hey, we wanna make sure we're giving you opportunities to take care of yourself. There's a direct financial connection to this as well in terms of avoiding costs when we're thinking about the cost of health insurance. Because when you look at your loss ratios, rule of thumb is about 50% of your claims are connected to 5% of your population. And so, if you can reduce your claims history, significant claims history on your 5%, then that's gonna let us stabilize the cost on health insurance as we look out over time. So, that was why we started doing this. Even to the point where we're saying if your spouse is on it, they have to pay for it, but you can sign up for this. Because we're not even talking about the loss of time that people have when it's, whether they're going. when it's whether they're going through these issues or whether their spouse is going through it, what that does in terms of staffing levels and those types of issues. And so we made the decision to move forward with this. The other thing that made a big impact on this, City Corpus Christi called these individuals and they were, the assistant city managers was quizzing them on the data. They did it for their public safety department, they didn't do it for the rest of their department. Their claims numbers on their public safety department trended down. Their claims numbers related to heart-related conditions on their general employees went up. And so we made the decision that because we had the money in the health fund to, to start this process, and it's going to be iterative, but what we're trying to do is balance, A, really make sure we're taking care of our folks because we know that the stress levels are unreal across the board. And we know there's a financial cost to that. And so as they continue moving through this, we'll get a sense of the numbers. We may see a slight uptick in claims cost. A lot of it may be people moving on to statins or maybe some people needing stents and other issues, but they're not having a full-blown heart attack, which, and so we expect the numbers to maybe do this and then hopefully start trending down over time. So that's really what this program is.
Sounds amazing. Councilor Popkin.
Not to over-index to the financial piece of this, but is there, are there like health insurance savings or incentives by running this kind of program? Like, is it caught up to that? No.
So we tried. And, I mean, the problem is, I think the health industry itself is in a tremendous state of flux right now. And something that we're finding that it's, it's hard for us to wrap our minds around is there is a direct correlation.
Yeah.
But there's also an increased cost. And so they look at things based on plan year. Will there be? I think there will be, but we're going to have to have the data to show it. And it'll show itself more than likely when we go out for bid again.
Sure.
And that's when we, I think, can expect to see it.
Got it. I appreciate you sharing that, all the work that you're doing there. Just wanted to add two more fun stats, not some fun stats to the discussion on this. One, in the general population, average age of a first heart attack is 65. For law enforcement officers, that average age is 46. And then we mentioned kind of like, was it the line of duty death rates? But 55% of firefighter line of duty death rates or deaths are due to stress, overexertion, heart attacks and strokes. 55% more than half. Thanks for the work.
Yeah, it's a serious issue and we're, and we're seeing it. And that also goes to the counseling program because we know the things that honestly our team members are dealing with are challenging. And that's why we're putting the money into the counseling program as well. They have a peer support team, both in police and fire. We've actually created one for just general employees as well because of that issue. Because unfortunately, things that used to be solely, you only saw in that world, we're now starting to see it in all of our worlds in terms of what our staff are dealing with. And so as we look at mental health, that's an important piece of what we're trying to do as an organization. Because that also plays into lost work time and those types of issues. And so we're trying to take a holistic view of how we're supporting our employees because their job's not getting any easier. It's getting considerably harder.
And so Mayor, the answer to one of the questions that you had earlier, the fund balance, we're projecting at the end of 2025 in this fund to be at 9.8%, or 9.8 million. So still a very healthy fund balance in this fund. We are projecting a slight increase in that for '26 to a little over $10 million fund balance by the end of '26. And that really is being driven by increased revenues. So increased cost of the health benefit leads to increased revenues coming into that fund. Also, additional staff, FTE, the, the city's share of, of health benefit costs is 14.5% of salary. So as our salaries are going up, the, the transfers essentially from the city's share into this fund are also increasing.
So what we're keeping in is, there may be a point in time where we have to shift to potentially a self-funded program. Not that we're saying it's now, but if that ever occurs, it's much easier to, to make that shift when you have a fund balance than when you don't. And part of that's going to be based on what are the reinsurance markets doing? What's the market generally doing? As we work on these programs we talked about, it may make it better for us. And so that's kind of why we're keeping this fund balance in place. That is why we're keeping this in place.
And, and this is the fund that I mentioned. We have moved some of the fund balance into our general employee retirement fund to gain some ground on that unfunded liability in prior years. So really quickly, we also maintain two self-insurance funds. Ones for general and property claims and ones for workers' compensation claims. So the city is self-insured for both of these, but really secures insurance coverage for claims above a certain level. So, so these funds essentially are used to pay for the deductibles or any amount that is below that level of insurance coverage. Revenues are, just like the employee benefit fund or the health benefit fund, the revenue to these funds are transfers from the major operating funds of the city. And we are projecting the total transfers to these funds to remain at the 2025 level, which is in total $1.8 million to the liability fund and $1.3 million to the workers' compensation fund. Both of these funds did end 2024 with, with pretty healthy fund balances as well. Thank you for that. Questions before we move on to unfunded needs? Seeing none, we'll keep going. Okay. So this is kind of the last major topic that we wanted to discuss with you. And, and it is a pretty lengthy topic here. As we've mentioned, we were unable to fund any Level 2 ongoing in the general fund or the public safety fund outside of those job audits. And so there are some pretty significant unfunded needs in several of our areas in the general fund. Those include senior services, children, youth and families, the library, human service agency funding, as well as parks and natural resources, the museum and public safety. We're going to hear from some staff tonight, particularly in that community enrichment area and public safety. But I think Harold wanted to touch on some of these areas before we move into those presentations.
And Mayor, Council, I think you all have heard, whether we're talking about early childhood education or senior services and library and health and human services, those are conversations we've been bringing to you all. The board has been making recommendations on that. So today, for the sake of time, what we really wanted to talk about is what you haven't heard as we're heading into this budget. By no means do I want to diminish what the challenges are that we're having in these other areas. You know, on the senior service side, that our time for folks to get appointments for services have actually increased and then we brought it in. And now it's increasing again. And so we're seeing more needs within our community, seeing very similar issues with children, youth and family services and what they need. And then obviously, the library has been a topic of conversation for a number of years. So you will see in the Level 2 requests that we weren't able to fund, the requests that they were putting into the system. Human service agency funding is one that I would say is becoming a much more significant issue for us. You know, we were at 1.2%. We moved from 2% of revenues over the last seven years.
Up to 3%.
Moved it to 3%. So we've been putting more money in through the budget process. But what we're really seeing in the human service agency arena is a lot of need. And a lot of need because of what's happening with the, within the economy generally. We're seeing the changes to federal funding, impacts to state budgets, and then that impacting county budgets where we're seeing actually significant decreases in funding that typically was supporting human, these human service agency groups. Christina brought you all some options. Because of the chaos, we put something in the council communication saying we might want to wait to make any adjustments this year, just because of the uncertainty. And, and what we're really seeing is, A, we're seeing, of the human service agencies that exist, we're seeing more of them that didn't need funding from this arena. We're seeing that increase. We're seeing more nonprofits that are now requesting assistance. So the demand is outpacing the revenues that we have. And so because we talked about those four bullet points, we're not going to spend time today. If Council wants us to spend more time today, we can bring that back at a future session. But we do want to talk about public safety and, and community enrichment because we haven't gone in depth on those like we have in some of the other areas.
And really quickly, the last attachment in your packet tonight, attachment I, is a list of all the unfunded Level 2 budget requests that are in the general fund that weren't funded in the general fund and the public safety fund. And just a quick note that any Level 2 request that did not have a general fund or public safety fund component, so those Level 2 requests, including positions in the utility funds or any of the other funds outside of general fund and public safety fund, were funded. So turn it over to David.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. I should say evening, late evening. David Bell, Director of Parks and Natural Resources. And I'm glad to have the opportunity to do this, Harold. I said Parks and Natural Resources, didn't I? Director of Parks, Recreation and Open Space. A new title for me and I, I think, again, I think this group knows me. I think I have the best job in the city, some of the best staff in the city. And again, we provide some of the best outdoor, no-cost opportunities for outdoor recreation to our community. That's from our parks and open space to our greenways in the DDA, the Longmont Downtown Development Area. However, we know that these free amenities aren't really free and that they do have a cost. And that's one of the things that I'm going to follow up on a lot of what Harold's kind of talked about last Tuesday and tonight as well. So we'll be talking about staffing, challenges and some of the impact. So with staffing, we know that, as Harold mentioned, in the general fund, 2008, Play Day had an impact on staffing throughout the city as well as the Parks and Natural Resources area. The 2013 flood, we had been asked to, you know, redirect funds to manage that disaster. And then 2020, when we really saw how important our parks and open space areas were to our public for their mental and physical health, we also, again, were asked to do more with less. And then coming into this cycle again, we'll be looking at doing the same thing. Some of the challenges that we have seen is that, is the use in our parks and natural areas has really increased. Part of that, again, is that kind of leftover from what COVID, when we were asked to get people out in the natural areas, they got out there, they enjoyed it and they're continuing that. Another piece of that really is council directives on increasing attainable and affordable housing. As we look at building multi-unit housing, those places don't have, and those individuals don't have the backyard for the dog. They don't have the backyard for the kids to play in. They don't have the basketball hoop in the front yard. So our parks really become their backyard. So as we're building these places, we're definitely seeing that increase. I saw that in right along with our park technicians. When the parks went over by the Walmart over on 119 there, he immediately saw almost a doubling in the trash collection in that area because those parks are getting used by those individuals that don't truly have that backyard. If we think about the parks as a backyard, we also think about our greenways and the DDA as really our, our front yard. It's kind of the way we invite people into the community. And the DDA and our streetscapes really become part of our driving force for our economics in the community too. So we have that link between our parks and DDA and the quality of life that actually lead to some of the economic drivers for our community. The impacts that we're really seeing is the fact that as we see this increase, we don't have the staffing increases. We will see, as Harold mentioned this before on Tuesday, that we will see a decrease in the level of service that we can provide our community. You all may recognize this as Roosevelt Park and think of it as one of our 150-year-old parks that's been part of our community for a long time and a reminder of how long we have to maintain these parks. But as our park technicians look at this, they see all those pink lines and those dots as irrigation systems, as signs, as flower beds, as shrubs. So not only are we seeing increasing in the number of parks, it has gone up now to 45 parks in natural areas, but also we're looking at over, I think it's 8,900 amenities within those parks that all have failure points and have to be maintained over time. Another piece that we were, I think we're really good at was looking at, we had some funds set aside that were not being used to build parks. So we really pushed the eight and five, trying to get eight parks done in, in five years. We've been really good at doing that. And we also had a conversation that we would not build stuff if we couldn't maintain it. And we know that's challenging, we have limited funds. So last year, Harold came up with some really creative ways to try to get two additional park technicians positions. And it has helped a lot, but what we really saw is they got really absorbed into trying to meet our demand for services in the DDA. And also now I've had, park technicians have been here over 20 years and saying for the first time and probably since 2008, it's the first time they've been able to really dig in and do some of that deep dive work as far as irrigation along Third Avenue, electrical work they just have not been able to get to. So we know that we're basically just catching up with those positions and not really covering those new parks that we've added to our system. So if we continue to have increasing in parks, don't increase staffing and things stay flat, we're going to see that dilution factor where those hours that staff have really get spread thinner and thinner as we go across the system. And again, we recognize that we will see a visible decline in how we maintain our parks. We used to, I came in here, we had a pretty common saying, we want to keep things clean, green and safe. But we've tried taking that kind of subjective measure and turned it to something we call Total Park Health, where we really can try to do a better job of quantifying what we want to achieve and what that level of service really is. Again, I really feel like I'm just echoing Harold's comments from last week that Longmont really does run lean. There's not a lot of fat to cut, but park staff, I think, has been very creative in ways we're trying to meet some of those needs. I think one of our best programs we've really been able to build is our volunteer program. As you can see here, this year, we're up to over 26,000, 2,600 hours of volunteer time with a total value of $92,000 of labor that those volunteers have put in that really helped us do work that is not just feel-good work, but the work that has to be done to make sure that we can do what we need to do in our parks. We've increased the way we do our processes to increase efficiency, everything from our, our work on the development services group to the way we manage our clocks and automate things. We've included robots in our system. You can see one of the, the robots up there that we now have out mowing Clover Metal Park and Fox Metal Park. In addition to that, I don't even have on here the fact that we actually have taken our development process and tried to streamline the way we're building our parks so that if we're building something at, we're incorporating SEPTED, which is a way to help reduce crime in the parks so that it makes it easier to maintain graffiti and vandalism. And our public safety officers have an easier way to help manage that. Also, if we're going to build something, we're working with our parks operations staff to make sure that if we build it, it's easy to maintain. And then again, we've increased contracting. We're trying to find that balance on where contractors are good, where our staff's good, and how we really kind of balance that piece. It's a work in progress and sometimes contractors are great, and other times they cost us more than they really are worth. And I'm going to go back again to what Harold said, though. In the final piece, there are just places where we need staff. We need that higher level of service. We need people to manage the contracts. We need people to run the volunteer programs. programs. So we really do need people in this system as well. This chart is a little interesting. Again, if we're trying to do the Total Park Health and looking at the top line that's kind of dropping down a bit is the work orders that we're trying to get closed out. We're closing out less work orders, but we're seeing an increased call from the public on calls for service. And that could be the graffiti, it could be the weeds, it could be the places where we're just falling behind as we're doing those things. And we're really are probably, if you average that, probably doing about the same amount of work, but a lot of that really is coming from a call for service from the public that they're noticing. Hopefully, part of that, we're trying to make ourselves more available through our system that we reach out to the public and say, if you see these things, let us know. So again, we're really trying to fine tune that data, but again, just that recognition that if we don't have staff to keep up, that we're going to see that dilution of hours, and we're going to see probably more calls for services and less ability to close those Those coming a little differently. So you heard we talked a little bit about Total Park Health and how we're looking to make some decisions. One of the things that we talked about, and Jeff was really wanting to really push the fact that if we're starting to make cuts, how do we make sure we're doing that in an equitable way? And I think if you just went back and looked at 2008 and 13 and 2020, we just stepped up and said, we're going to take some cuts and make that happen where we needed to, we'd figure it out. But with Total Park Health, we're really trying to look at, we want to know what we have, what our resources are, what condition they're in, what the loss of maintenance costs us over time, and that if we want to make a cut, that it's going to be equitable across our system. Right now, we're trying to make sure that our community parks and the DDA are in an A condition, our neighborhood parks are in a B condition, and some of the nature areas and right-of-ways are more in a C condition. This tool gives council, Harold, and ourselves the ability to say, do we lower everything from our As down to Bs, Bs to Cs? Do we say that we want to keep our community parks and DDA at an A level and then reduce levels in some of those other areas like medians and right-of-ways? These pictures are supposed to come in a little bit differently. I apologize for not having looked at this in the presentation mode. But clean, green, and safe can mean a lot of things. Weeds are green, a restroom can be clean, but someplace you probably don't want to go into because it's just been aged over time and not been maintained, you know, over time. It just has that that kind of tired feeling that Jeff talks about. Roosevelt Rose Garden can look beautiful, but it can also have weeds. So we have that, we have some ability to build in things, we can make sure we're focusing on safety, making sure we're focusing on people to have enjoyable time in our community. But some of those pictures up there, if you see the weeds in the median, unfortunately had to go out to our neighbors to the east to find something of that level, but that's what they consider, you know, a standard of care in their community. And again, we don't want to see that, but as we have to start making decisions on where we want to have these reductions in levels of service, we're going to have to prioritize those in how we manage our our parks, natural resources, and our DDA. Harold, anything?
Questions on parks? I don't see anything, so we're...
All right.
Thank you, David.
Evening, Mayor Peck, members of council. I'm Eric Mason, Longmont Museum Director. 2024 and 2025 have been the best years yet at the Longmont Museum. Between two landmark exhibits, Lego and Picasso, and hundreds of complimentary programs, we achieved record attendance. Building on that success, we are currently renovating and expanding, and we are on schedule to open our new galleries in fall of 2026 with a brand-new children's gallery, an expanded feature gallery, and a redeveloped history gallery. Knowing that the museum would only reopen in the galleries in fall of '26, we did not request a full year of staff to cover those spaces, only enough time to cover the months that they would be open, as well as a contractor to design our new history gallery, less than $40,000 of additional funds in 2026. I will note, in 2027, when the museum is open for a full year, the need for additional staff will grow. To fully serve our community, we will need to pay staff and contractors to design, oversee, and maintain all of our exhibits. The children's gallery is the key to the museum's expansion, providing informal, early childhood educational experiences to families in our community at a very low cost. And our past experience has shown that hands-on exhibits, properly maintained and cared for, can draw up to 45% more attendance than a standard hands-off type exhibit. Our children's gallery is geared for toddlers up to age eight, and if any of you have ever worked with toddlers or young children, you know that spaces designed for them tend to need a little more maintenance than a regular space. So without the gallery attendance to help guide behavior and exhibit technicians to repair exhibits when they do break down, visitor experience may not live up to what our community expects and deserves. As well, without staff in place, we will have to slow down our changing exhibit schedule as well. I want to particular highlight that our expansion will expand and increase our gallery space by 70%. This expansion has been years in the making, and it will transform how we can serve our community. Without additional support, staff may experience burnout and quality will suffer. The museum has raised more than $10 million, mostly from private sources through a multi-year capital campaign to make this expansion a reality. With a small amount of additional support, this can become the gem that it deserves to be and fully support early childhood education, which is a city council priority, and as well as driving visitors from across the region to Longmont, as well as making the museum a treasured amenity for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Are there any questions or comments? Councilor Popkin.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. Thank you, Eric. Beyond the current expansion that's planned on the, at the Quail Campus there, are there future visions for additional museum facilities?
Councilmember Popkin, at this point, we are focused on getting our expanded facility fully staffed and up and running. We do certainly plan to do outreach activities, increase the amount of work we're out there in the community, but as far as a additional facility expansion, right now, that's not in our plans.
Okay.
Are there any more questions? So to kind of give you a sense of, I think we're good, Eric. I think with the challenges, you're seeing...
Thank you, Eric.
Thanks. You're seeing a gamut of issues. And so you're seeing core infrastructure maintenance issues that you see with parks in terms of we have assets that we've built, assets that we need to maintain, you're seeing human service issues in terms of human service funding, and then you're seeing the world of what we need in clinicians and mental health support with our senior services, library issues. And so what I say to staff is, and I said to you all, if we could fund everything, we wish we could just snap our fingers and fund everything. The reality is that we can't. And now we're going to get to public safety. And so when we look at the challenges that we're going through in the budget, what you see is a lot of competing demands. And and there's a point where, you know, it's sort of becoming a daily occurrence where I'm like, have to, need to, want to, have to, need to, want to, just because of the challenges that we're we're seeing financially. I wish, we're not the only one in this position. Every city, every, you know, in Colorado, every city, the state, we're all in this position right now. And it really is, you know, the funding mechanism. And in this budget year, you know, we can clearly identify two things, the property tax adjustments and the use tax. And and those are things, the use tax, we couldn't really have anticipated what, how drastic it would be in a shift. We do think it'll loosen up. So when I say this, you're probably overwhelmed now. We were overwhelmed the last two months. I think there are things that we can do, but we really wanted to talk to you all about, this is kind of, this is what we're not doing, and and let you get a sense of what we need, what we have to do, what we need to do, and what we want to do, because that's the framework we're going to start talking to council about as it relates to our budget. So at this point, we'll ask James Brown to come up and talk about public safety. And as he's doing it, I mean, it really is about a couple of options. You can either grow your revenue stream or you cut your expenses. You know, fairly simple process. I think what we're saying in in this budget message is, is if we move to the cutting expenses, it really is a cutting of services because there's not much that we can do where you just take a little bit of it. And if you think about it in recreation, they have an 80% cost recovery requirement. So if we save a dollar in recreation, we're only saving 20 cents because they're recovering 80% of it. So to get that value, it's a lot, but you're also losing the revenue. Whereas some places, you don't have that cost recovery piece, and it's a dollar for dollar. And so when you're going through that process, those are the things actually that we were preparing ourselves to talk about in the budget process prior to kind of resolving some of the funding issues. JB?
All right. Good evening, Mayor Peck, members of council. I know it's already been a long night, and I've got quite a bit of information, so the commitment I'm going to make to you and everyone else in this room and anyone listening is, I'm going to go through it quickly and hit on the on the key points, but obviously, if you need further clarification or have a question, please interrupt me, and I'll be more than happy to to go in in more depth. So what I'm here to talk about today is kind of the staffing situation we have in public safety. This has been something that we've known about and we've been trying to address, and we're kind of reaching that point where we need to develop a plan. We presented a strategic plan for the next five, five years, and that's kind of what I'm going to go over here with you all. To get started, I'm going to touch on a few areas. First of all, going to our historic staffing, so you kind of see where we've been, operational changes that we've seen over the course of time, our current staffing levels, the staffing challenges that we have, our staffing goals and our contingency plan. So when we, when we were developing this, this plan, we wanted to take a look at some data to see where we've been, kind of how things evolved over a period of time, and then how we compare to other agencies and other departments. So historically, we looked at 16-year span. During that 16-year span, we have seen a total staff increase in public safety of 22%, an 18% increase in our sworn police, and a 15% increase in our sworn fire, and a 37% increase in our professional staff. This graph here kind of shows that increase over time, and you can see that it remained pretty flat until 2019, and then we got a bump there. That coincides with the the increase to the public safety tax that was mentioned earlier. During that time, the the net gain was was 65 positions. So then we we wanted to look at, as you know, public safety is funded through through two funds, the general fund and the public safety fund. And so we wanted to take a look at the comparisons in those funds. So this next graph here shows for that same time span, that 16-year time span, this is the staffing growth that we've seen in the in the general fund. During that timeframe, we've had an increase of 1.35 police officers for fire, sworn fire personnel, and no increases to our professional staff. Now, I do want to note that we're looking here just specifically at the general fund, and and obviously, it's a combination of everything that we're looking at, and there's a lot of factors that go into into what we're looking at. This next piece here, this next graph is showing that, just taking a look at 2009 versus 2025 during that same same timeframe, the FTEs in the general fund for the city increased 25%, while again noting that during that same timeframe, public safety had a increase of, I think it was a little over, what is it, 2.1%? I had to take my glasses off to see over there, and now I'm struggling down here.
And I'll jump in with, this is the one where I was, I was talking to you all about this. So if you remember the library presentation, they referenced similar numbers. When we look at that 25% growth, so think about REC. REC is growing, but they've had revenue to come alongside of it for the growth. Or if you think about, you know, we're removing comms positions, and there's a nexus to the work that they're doing for the enterprise funds. And so I think that's, that's one of the challenges in this is just the complexity of the general fund and where the revenues are coming from and how you're establishing nexus to that, because those funds can't pay for police services, but they can pay for work that's being done within the purchasing department that's a direct connection. So if you think of the utilities, they can pay for purchasing HR and those types of activities. So as you add, next slide, you're adding a lot of work in those departments. And so that's a piece of the 25%. And we can get more granular on this, but I wanted to give that clarity.
This next slide shows the ratio, and again, we're just talking about the general fund right now, but in 2009, if you just looked at all of the FTEs in that general fund, public safety made up 40, 48% of all of those positions. Currently today, that ratio is, public safety makes up 43%. Interesting thing to note, though, here is if you look at the actual funding in the general fund, that's remained consistent. And so one of the challenges where we have, right, is the increased costs, the increased personnel costs. And so the funding has remained consistent, but hasn't been able to to show that growth in the actual, in the actual resources. And then when we take a look at the public safety fund, obviously, this is where we've we've been able to see our growth, and we talked about kind of the struggles with the public safety fund earlier. But this has been a huge support for our, for our department, and this is where we've seen resources coming in, and you can see where that that growth has happened in the in the public safety fund. So now I just wanted to kind of paint a picture of of how things have changed from 2009 to today. And obviously, we take a look at population, seeing 18% growth in population, seeing a 29% increase in our calls for service. But when I, when we take a look at the resources that we have, and I'm focusing here on on police and specifically in patrol, because those are our folks that are out there every day responding to the calls for service. So in 2009, the total patrol officers assigned to patrol were 64 officers. In 2025, the total police officers assigned to patrol are 65 officers. So it's a net gain, a difference of one officer, but a 29% increase in calls for service. And when you take a look at, I'll just briefly touch on the different watches there. So you've got watch one, which is our day shift, watch two, which is our mid-shift, and watch three, which is our overnight shift. That first number there represents what we call minimum staffing, meaning on that shift, that's how many officers at a minimum we have to have working. And the reality is, the vast majority of our shifts are, we're operating at minimum staffing or below. And then that second number is the total number of officers assigned to that shift for the entire week. And so when we take a look, you know, watch one, it's essentially the same, well, it is the same. Watch two, we've had a slight increase and a decrease on watch three. As we talk about resources and increase in calls for service, it's it's more than that too. It's the complexities of the jobs that have changed during this timeframe here, more complex investigations, we're responding to more calls now, reference mental health and in dealing with people like social service-related calls, substance abuse-related calls, homelessness. We've seen a stark increase in those type of of calls. And then technology has impacted police work exponentially, you know, and back when I started, I started in 2008, you might get a call where you're having to write a search warrant for an electronic device, right? Now everybody's carrying a computer in their pocket, and just about every crime we deal with, a computer's involved, and the complexities of of those investigations have magnified. During this time, we've got a body-worn camera mandate that has been mandated by the state, and now every single police contact has to be recorded on body cameras. And then the impact that's had on the backend, because not only are we recording in the moment, but then all of that, all of that video's got to be uploaded, stored, maintained, and then upon request, it's got to be pulled out, redacted, and that's created a lot more processes for our people. Increased state mandated in reporting, now every police contact has to be reported in a separate database that goes to the state. Now every police contact has to be reported in a separate database that goes to the state. And it's just not reporting a contact, but it's reporting a lot of specific details about that contact to include uh, demographics, uh, the outcome of the contact, details on any force or that may have been used during that contact. Uh, and the reality is, uh, for many factors, we have a much less experienced workforce. Um, in fact, right now on patrol, seventy-six percent of the police officers on patrol have been with the department for less than five years. And when we take a look at all sworn police officers, forty-six percent of all sworn police officers that work for our department have been with the department for less than five years. And so that has a, a substantial impact on what we can expect our people to do and uh, especially when you add in some of the complexities and the demands of of society. I mean, really the demand is near perfection and the consequences for not being perfect uh, can be, can be severe. It can end in uh, loss of a career or worse. And then we've had uh, expanded discovery demands uh, through the courts. So as body cameras have gotten added, as more technology's gotten added, um, the discovery demands that we, we've got to provide for each one of our cases, um, have expanded. The requests to process those are taking substantial staff hours. And uh, the consequences for not providing that discovery means the cases, the, the good work our people are doing and the cases they're making, they're, they'll be unsuccessful. Those cases will get thrown out. So that just kind of shows some of the complexity of the job. Next thing I wanted to look at was when we take a look at our priority calls for service. Now this data here, um, we pulled the data that was available in our new CAD system. So it's a four-year look back and caveat when we're looking at this data is obviously twenty-twenty was an odd year for us.
Can I just interrupt?
Yes, please.
A question.
Sorry, just had a quick clarification on the previous slide. Just wanted to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. When you say every contact, you mean as every physical contact between an officer and another human or like is oral, like just having a conversation, an encounter, verbal encounter? Like, is that all considered a contact?
Yeah, so the way that the law is, is defined, it's any contact a law enforcement officer makes with the intention of enforcing the law. So I, I wouldn't have to, if I'm walking into a convenience store and I say hi to somebody, I don't have to record that contact. But if I'm making a phone call, um, to follow up on a call, yeah, that's got to be recorded.
So it's nothing to do with like physically I put my hand on this person's shoulder and record it? It's like truly every contact that is in the service of.
Yeah, it's essentially every contact a police officer makes.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Um, so going to the priority calls for service, so the one caveat there is twenty-twenty, obviously we had a lot going on in twenty-twenty with COVID, but I still think this kind of shows the trends that, that we're looking at. And I'll just briefly touch on this. Since in this four-year time, we've had an eighty-three point eight percent increase in our priority calls for service. Really quickly, when I talk about priority calls for service, I'm talking about what we define as priority one and priority two calls for service. That's crimes that are happening in the moment. They're happening right now and they require an immediate uh, police response. Uh, so examples could be anything from a homicide to an injury, you know, accident on the roadway. We take a look at response time, our response time has increased twelve point four percent. Our on-scene time, so when I talk about on-scene time, it's the time that our officers are spending on the scene. And to do this calculation, uh, I'm assuming two officers per call, when in reality, a lot of calls require more officers than two, but to try to keep things simple for a comparison. But then uh, on-scene time has increased by sixty-nine percent, sixty-nine percent, which is equivalent to four FTEs. Uh, and again, that's assuming just a one, a one unit response with four uh, fire personnel on it. So we've taken steps to, to try to mitigate, mitigate some of these effects and maximize our resources, leveraging non-commissioned staff uh, to do more. Uh, anywhere where we can have a, a non-commissioned staff performing duties and free up our, our sworn staff to be out on the street. Uh, implementation of specialized units like our core unit, which is our co-response mental health, uh, response unit, uh, our case management to really focus on some of those uh, higher acuity, acuity calls I was talking about earlier. Leveraging technology, um, whether that be uh, use of uh, AI and report writing, um, use of some of the, the uh, real-time uh, systems we have like drones, anything we can do to try and um, increase efficiency and and maximize our, our personnel. And then finally, as a department, taking a look at all of our procedures, all of our processes and trying to streamline those and uh, decrease those bottlenecks and increase efficiency there. So the next part of uh, what we looked at was, well, this is our current staffing level today and we did a comparison on uh, ratios per one thousand residents, which the per capita ratio is pretty common when you're uh, taking a look at uh, comparing that. So police right now, we're at uh, a per capita ratio of one point six one officers for every thousand residents. Uh, sworn fire is at point nine eight and our professional staff is at point nine seven. Total for public safety is at three point five seven. So we tried to compare that to what that looks like nationally, um, with some uh, the numbers that were available. So according to uh, two thousand nineteen FBI data, uh, the national average for sworn officers is two point four per thousand residents. The average in Colorado is two point two sworn officers. And uh, cities that they classify as similar size is one point six four. One thing I want to add there is their classification for similar sized cities are all the cities across the nation between um, a hundred thousand residents and two hundred and fifty thousand residents. So it's a wide uh, variety of cities. On the fireside, the data isn't as, as, as available, um, but in a twenty-twenty uh, US Fire Department profile study, uh, they've got the national average between one point five four and one point eight one uh, per thousand or uh, yeah, per thousand residents. But with fire, there's many variables that go into that, um, you know, what the type of calls they do, do they, do they respond to medical calls, do they not respond to medical calls, uh, population density? So for example, east coast cities tend to have much higher per capita rates than um, less dense areas. So in twenty-twenty-two, a Colorado staffing study was done looking at twenty-one different uh, departments and districts and uh, the average per capita on that was one point two nine sworn officers per thousand residents. So tho- those averages were helpful, but we really wanted to kind of try to focus in on some uh, other cities that were similar to Longmont, similar instruction, uh, similar in structure and similar in size. And so we looked at these six cities here, um, to just try and get an idea of where we, where we stand next to them. Now before I go into this, I'm going to tell you that doing an apple to apple comparison can be difficult because budgets are structured differently, um, departments are structured differently, differently. So like us being a department of public safety, uh, we have a lot of combined resources that we're using. And so i- it's not, it's not quite an apple to apple comparison, but I think it, it still gives us some, some good information.
Um, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I would like to move that we extend the meeting past eleven o'clock. It's been moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Popkin. Let's vote.
Can you do a verbal vote, please?
Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That passes, thank you.
So when we looked at these uh, six similar cities, the first thing we looked at was uh, look at total FTEs uh, that they had in, in their, in their main funds that support uh, police and fire. And so when we looked at uh, total FTEs, you can see there, uh, Longmont, third on the list of BN, and this is again based off of per capita at eleven point four. Then we looked at, okay, of those FTEs, what percentage or what portion of that is committed to police, fire? And uh, that's, these ratios here now, like I said earlier, because we're a department of public safety, you know, it's difficult when you just take a look at Longmont's police and Longmont Fire. So I, I think a, a better representation is when you look at that combined number. So what we did is we looked at all the personnel in a police and fire department combined versus public safety combined. Uh, the one caveat I would say to that too, that, that complicates that though is again going to the budget structure. So for example, here in Longmont, we have a dispatch center and the uh, emergency management is part of public safety, wherein other entities, they may not have that or they may be budgeted in different, in different areas.
Did you, um, some of the cities you looked at, they also have fire districts, right?
Uh, we looked at everything that had a fire department.
Department, not a district. So the fire districts create other challenges generally too.
Uh, so in the, the average per capita on these, uh, those six cities we looked at, you can see how it breaks down here. Um, and again, I just kind of focusing on the combined number, that three point eight versus a three point six. Uh, the other numbers on there for police and fire, that's all police personnel and all fire personnel, it's not broken out into specifically sworn personnel. So some of the current challenges uh, we're facing, uh, you know, we, we've got people, uh, we talked about, you know, working oftentimes below minimum staffing, uh, the overtime rates that our people are working. We talked earlier about the, the health effects that, that uh, specific to, you know, police and fire and the organization as a whole. So the challenges we're facing include compromised safety, uh, operating over capacity, uh, widespread burnout, uh, the inability to fill gaps due to injuries or long-term absences, um, a reduced amount of time for training and then turnover and succession planning is always difficult, uh, especially when we talk about our sworn positions. So just to give you an example, our average turnover in the sworn police ranks is ten percent a year. So we lose sixteen officers a year. Uh, it takes about a year to a year and a half to onboard a new officer, get them trained and get them ready to be out on the street. So if I lose an officer today, I'm not going to have someone filling their position until this time next year. Um, and so really trying to get strategic about how do we approach that and how do we better manage that? So our goal through all of this then, let me get caught up here on mine, is to ensure critical public safety functions are fully staffed with skilled professionals while strategically using our support staff and our technology to enhance efficiency, service quality and long terms uh, sustainability. So this is kind of the plan that we, we formulate and we put together and our goal is by twenty-thirty to increase sworn police staffing to an average of two point oh, so two officers per a thousand residents. Uh, still below the Colorado average, but that would be a significant, um, uh, it'd make a significant difference for, for our community and our, our department. That would mean though adding an additional forty police officer positions. Uh, within that, obviously if you're adding those type of positions, we'd have to add in some more uh, supervisory ranks. So the way we broke it down was it would be one commander position, two sergeant positions and thirty-seven uh, officer positions. And we proposed a, a phased approach and, and really the, the crux of this is, I talked earlier about the turnover that we experience and having to, to get ahead of that so that we're not um, constantly uh, chasing our tails or playing catch-up. And so part of that would be adding what I'm calling sixteen uh, transitional positions. I'm making this distinction because I think we can, we can budget that differently than our, our, our standard positions because maybe we don't need a vehicle for every one of those positions or, or some of those other costs that are associated with it. But this would truly allow us, our authorized strength right now is a hundred and sixty-six sworn officers. But in reality, our, our, we're never going to have more than a hundred and fifty because of our turnover, right? So this would allow us to get in front of that turnover and make an immediate impact to uh, the operations. And then it's a phased approach from there with, you can see uh, five officers and twenty-seven, five officers and a sergeant and twenty-seven, twenty-eight, six and twenty-nine and five and, five and a commander and thirty. Uh, part of this uh, plan would also be to continue to leverage our, our non-sworn staff. So we have sworn officers right now that are performing duties that we could have non-sworn personnel perform those duties. The problem we have right now is we don't have a non-sworn or professional staff that we could just plug into those duties. We'd have to bring a new position on and then reallocate those officer positions. But some of the areas that were identified there is in our recruiting, hiring and promotions unit, our professional standards unit and on, on our range. So on the fireside, very similar approach, uh, that approach is reaching a goal of one point two five firefighters per thousand residents. That would require an additional twenty-seven uh, positions. And again, a phased approach, uh, we looked at a five-year phased-in approach uh, with that. Uh, and one note uh, with that too is, is these additional positions uh, would allow the opportunity for uh, the department and the city to pursue a, a city ambulance service, uh, which could have uh, budgeting ramifications to a revenue, those type of things. On uh, the professional staff side, uh, we've got some areas that are definitely over capacity and need help. Uh, our records department, I talked about all those, the discovery demands, the records requests have gone through the roof. And so our records department is uh, in serious need of some additional help. So we'd have three, uh, three additional uh, PSTs in there. Uh, property and evidence i- is another area, uh, where we'd have a, an additional CSO in, in there on fire administration and EMS coordinator and a codes inspector, an admin assistant for police administration and eventually a facility manager for uh, for public safety. So right now, just to give you context with that, uh, those duties are, we've, we've got sworn personnel trying to manage the Safety and Justice Center and all of our fire stations and the training and, and the range and so trying to really get our sworn personnel doing the job we need them to do. Uh, so with that, um, we had to obviously plan for, okay, what are some of the things we can do if, if this isn't possible? And before I click over to the contingency slide, I'm going to say that none of the options I'm about to go through are good options. Um, but you know, we've talked about some of the struggles we have and so these are realistic things that we'd have to look at. So our contingency plan would include um, eliminating positions and programs. And I'll go through some of them, I'll hit on some of them, but in, in total, if we were to make all of these moves, we're estimating a, a savings of about three point two million dollars, which would yield about nineteen sworn positions and it could be sworn police or fire. So some of the, some of the moves we identified would be the elimination of the collaborative services chief position and uh, re- uh, reallocating that position somewhere else in the department or the, and then uh, reassigning the uh, the responsibilities of that position to existing staff. Uh, eliminate, we have a grant coordinator position who, that's critical, uh, in finding a lot of our grant funding that we have to support a lot of our programs. Uh, we could eliminate that position, but that would definitely reduce our capacity to pursue external funding. Uh, eliminate our case management program, um, that would eliminate our coordinator, project coordinator, two peer case managers, uh, that would also uh, effectively eliminate all of our grant funded positions and all of the grant dollars that support the operations for that program. Uh, we could eliminate our core paramedics, um, and switch our, our co-response model to uh, police and clinician model. Uh, we could eliminate one of our core uh, clinician positions. Uh, that position uh, is that clinical position for the fourth team that we're, eventually I, I know, uh, there's a strong desire to get that back. Eliminate a victim advocate position, uh, but again, that'll decrease our ability to provide um, those services to our crime victims. Basically reallocate and eliminate the, the neighborhood resource team and reallocate those officers, uh, our data analyst position, two of our four animal control positions, our humane society contract, um, but again, that would eliminate services that we're providing our community. Uh, reduce our canine unit and our SWAT capacity, uh, reduce our bright collaboration contract, which provides a sort of justice um, for our community. And then finally, uh, eliminate non-public safety positions that are funded through the public safety. But those positions are also critical positions. One of them had, one of them is our public safety attorney and legal advisor. And so that would be, um, that would be obviously tough. So like I said, none of those options are, are ideal, um, and none of those options we look at and, and take lightly, but it's the reality of, um, we've got to find a way to get more uh, sworn police and sworn firefighters uh, on the street. So with that, I know I breezed through that really quickly, um, but I'm happy to answer any questions or try to provide more context or detail.
Counselor Popkin?
Thank you. Two clarifying questions. Could you just elaborate on what the humane society contract is and what the bright collaborative contract is?
Uh, I can touch on it and I'm sure others in the room can fill in more specifics, but the, our, I can tell you that our humane society contract, uh, is about a million dollars a year and that allows us to, when we, uh, when our animal control, uh, picks up a loose animal, we're able to take that animal into the humane society, house that animal there. So it, it's basically our contract with the humane society to take the, the loose animals here in, in the city. Um, it, I know there's other services that they provide, of course, with that and I'm overgeneralizing it, but I don't know, certainly if you want to add more, Harold, is that?
Yeah, I think that's, um, it's the expense of taking the animals there, how many we're contributing, what their operating expenses are. You know, do you realize a million dollars? Probably not because you have to have a place to take animals and somebody willing to take it. So and a lot of this, it's also, well, what's the expense and how do you manage it? So generally that's it and bright is restorative. And bright is restorative justice, right?
Yeah, and a huge component of that is with our rewind program. And the services offered through there. So, essentially, in lieu of arresting somebody or charging them criminally, we give them the opportunity to go through a sort of justice process. And if they successfully complete the process, then no criminal charges are filed against them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor, Mayor Protim?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, as I look at this list, I don't think any of these are negotiable. Like, I just, you know, and looking at what's proactive. And even listening to the judge speak earlier today, that we need even more, like how the calls to service are so nuanced and there's so many different levels related to drug addiction, mental health, homelessness. So, our problems are escalating. And I feel like this is, is not where we want to be pulling from. But then, and so, going back to the previous slide, where, maybe it was the one before, where you had the phased-in approach?
For police or fire.
For police and then fire. But, so is this where you were looking at going directly to the overall staffing or looking at a phased approach? When you were looking at the, you know, what could we eliminate so we can?
So, this phased approach here is what we identified, is what we feel like is what we need for our sworn ranks. And if we're unable to fill these needs, then...
We have to look to the other.
Then we're looking at the contingency. And for what it's worth, I agree with you wholeheartedly. And when we take a look at it, and I think I speak for everyone in the department, you know, we agree in that those are the programs that separate our department from other departments across the state and across the country. And we're very proud of them, and we think that they do great work. But at the same token, we've got to find a way to increase our patrol staffing. We've got to, we've got to find a way to get more uniformed officers on the street responding to calls for service.
Yes. And that's, you know, as the demand grows, you know, we have to have the people there as our population grows. And then what was the, can you show me the slide for the fire as well? I just needed to have that bookmarked for myself. So, Harold, turn it to you. What are some things that we could look at in our budget or looking for the future that we could not have to sacrifice much-needed programs and staffing to help build up public safety to where it needs to be for 102,000 people?
So, I think that, I mean, that's a hard question. Because when you look at, again, how lean we are, you know, there's some significant things. And if you, I mean, I can give you 100 options. The question is what option is palatable in terms of how we look at this? You know, when we, when we think about the move from 2% to 3% for health and human service funding, you know, that, that is money that would have gone into the general fund, but we've pushed it here. And those are different policy decisions, different discussions, different times. And I think when you're thinking about what's the change in the world and what we're dealing with, or, you know, do we throttle back on, and these are things that don't have a direct impact, but do we throttle back on money that we're putting in for the affordable housing and what we're doing? Because there may be ongoing funding there. Again, there's not a good decision point in here in what we're looking at. I don't think we need to go to, this is the starting point for the conversation. There are other things behind this. And so, when we look at it and we think about, well, what are the revenue streams coming into our system and what's important? I think understanding that city budgets are fundamentally built on growth. You know, we can't necess, unless we raise taxes, you know, it is the growth factor that starts creating capacity in it. And so, when you have a project, what is generated from a sales and use tax perspective? We know that's going down. When you're looking at a project and you're looking at density, for example, the higher the density, the more return you're actually going to get because you don't have the same cost exposure that you do on other projects. And so, what is that when you run it through an in-plan model and figure out what is the revenue generated by that from a sales tax perspective? It oddly starts connecting then to the types of businesses that you have in your community from a commercial perspective. Because when you look at businesses and when they locate, what are they looking at? They're looking at rooftops, bodies, traffic count, disposable income. So, it is a system that is moving in there. This is where economic development starts flowing into the conversation in terms of what businesses are we bringing into the community? How are we working on those things? And what kind of revenue are they generating into the system? Because that ultimately supports this. You know, we can unequivocally say, but for Costco, the problem's a lot worse, and we're talking about it earlier. Costco kind of balanced it. You know, when we pay the debt off, there's a revenue source that's coming in. When Smucker's revenue, as it starts falling, there's revenue sources coming in. So, when we look at this, this is the numbers they put together. We now have to start modeling when these other revenue sources are going to come in. And so, do we have to do something today now? That's not what we're saying. What we're saying is, you know, we need to start paying attention to this. We need to create models. We need to keep, create opportunities to deal with this. I don't want to be Chicken Little's "Sky's Falling" because you're one good economic development deal away from a bleak situation to you're in a much different situation. And I think really talking to folks about understanding, I know, I don't like to use the word growth, right? Because growth triggers so many different things and so many different reactions. But if you look at cities that aren't...
They die, yeah.
There's a different situation. And you see in those cities where they're pushing fee increases and tax rates and things like that. Because they're having to generate the money to accomplish the same thing. And when you're in a suburban area, it's even more complicated because many of the issues that we're dealing with aren't necessarily our residents. I mean, I talk to these guys all the time. A significant number of our significant issues are not generated by people who live in our community. And many of those have taken a lot of time and a lot of cost. So, you can't isolate yourself, understanding that we're in that world where we're really adjacent to a lot of communities and things are moving in. So, all of these things was to give you a flavor of kind of what the budget sessions were. Because every single one of them sounded like this.
Yeah.
Every department was a reflection of everything that you've heard. There are ways for us to move forward. I think it's use of technology. Evaluate, how do we generate additional revenue? How do we understand the nexus between projects and the revenue those projects are generating to support the system? How do we really start digging into what do we need to cut? How can we get better? There are many solutions to this, so I don't want us to get trapped into trying to figure it out right now. I think we can bring many different options to you. And honestly, you heard earlier when I said, there are a couple of projects that if we're able to get those done, could change this entire conversation. And so, that's then where you see the other aspects of the organization sliding in and working on business development and economic development, these other issues. Because one or two projects can change the financial trajectory.
Yes.
And so, those are things we need to work through. This is kind of saying, here's this information, we want you to know it. Now, we need to take this and start breaking it down. One of the things in this budget that you will see is we funded a half a million dollars to start an over-hire program with police so that we can start minimizing the gaps of when people retire and they leave. Did we want to put a million into it? We did, but we also then had to put a million dollars in to replace the radios.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So, do you replace radios or do you do this? And those are needed equipment. So, I don't want us to get too lost in it right now. There are many solutions and we can find ways to do it. I think the important piece for us is really, as we're talking to the community, is to help connect the dots to...
Well, and I don't want public to walk away thinking we're okay with letting go of core services.
And we're not making that proposal. We are not making that proposal.
So, it made me a little stressed. But the other thing too is as we look at higher density, you know, my concern is, you know, the impacts, do, would we make enough to even hire enough personnel in fire and police to accommodate or meet the needs of an even growing population?
So, that's where technology's coming in. So, when I think of things like placer and what we look at generating revenue, we're also talking about the use of in-plan, which is a financial calculator that starts, you know, making assumptions on what's generated. What do you as an individual generate in sales tax in the community? Because that's where most of it's going to come from. And then you're looking at the overall financial picture and what we're trying to accomplish. Oddly enough, that's where events start sliding in. The more people that come into our community that spend sales tax money here and do things, that's another revenue source that doesn't have a longstanding impact. So, we've got to really probe everything that we're doing, and in some cases, not just what we're doing, but what our partners are engaged in.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that.
Counselor Christ?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I'm eyeballing the math, and just to get your police officers in 2026, I estimate it's going to take about $4.3 million in sales to raise the adequate amount of sales tax. So, I don't know if you've done the math. But my question is, is do you think there's a relationship between policing and sales generation in local business?
I mean, I think inherently, safer community, you know, businesses prosper and communities that feel safe. I know me, on a personal level, if, when me and my family go shopping somewhere, or I take my wife somewhere, I like to go to a place that I know is safe and a thriving community. So, I think it plays in, in that aspect for sure. You know, and I think, you know, Longmont as a whole, I mean, don't get me wrong, is a safe community. And we've got, we've got great services in place, and part of this is maintaining what we've established. And so, and another, another piece of this too that I'll point out is, for the last 20-plus years, the Longmont Public Safety has grown its reputation on the engagement that we have with the community and the proactive things that we do with the community to build that trust, to build that engagement. It's getting more and more difficult. It's getting more and more difficult just because of the available resources. And I don't want to, I don't want to see us lose that either. I think that's so valuable for, for our community. And I think it's valuable for our businesses within the community and having to be partners and partnering with the businesses and making sure that they know that they have a voice and helping them and partnering up with them to help solve problems that they're encountering and stuff. And so, yeah, I think it does have a direct correlation.
Thanks. So, we don't all have to spend $4.3 million, but we have chunks that we can gain with economic development and then, you know, buy local. Thank you for the presentation.
Hey, I've thought about it. But, you know, again, to kind of talk about this, when you see it, there's a trend, you know, we're not in the position where we're making cuts. We're not, we're managing it. How do we think about the future? How do we think about development? How do we think about all the different revenue sources? Frankly, the decision that you all just made earlier on the enclave annexation, big change in this number. And so, and hopefully, some of the things that we're alluding to, we can, we can bring to fruition, and it will change the scenario. I wish I could say more, I can't. But there's a nexus to all of the things we're talking about.
And half of that, that marijuana tax can go to some of those services he was just saying, our mental health.
Yeah, because on the other side of this, how much do we need to spend in children, youth, and family services to work with people ahead of the time so that they don't generate calls for service?
Exactly.
So, now you're seeing the linkages that we're working with. And I do think there's solutions. I think we can bring it to you. I'm not saying Chicken Little's "Sky's Falling." We need to be aware of this and start methodically moving to the future.
I appreciate that you're bringing it to us and letting us hear from the departments themselves as to what they're facing and the challenges.
So, I will say, this is the best budget year I've had since I've been here. They fully embrace, I don't care whether it's good news or bad news, just give me the news. And it's kind of led to this conversation in how we're presenting to you. So, I really appreciate them.
Yeah, I appreciate it too. It's, it's better. Okay, is there anything else? Are you finished? Oh, Counselor Popkin?
Just a quick comment on that, because last week, the Planning and Zoning Commission saw the redevelopment of the Walmart site proposal, right? And that's, take another great example from a system standpoint where you have this blighted property that's been a source of criminal activity and calls for service, that's now being like reinvent, redeveloped for more housing and more services, but also going to help bring kind of that funding to our budget as well, right?
Yeah, so theoretically, I think the numbers we saw in that, just from the sales and use tax, is that if it were to hit this year, that probably would reduce the deficit that Teresa's talking about at around two, from $2 million to probably a little under a billion. So, I mean, that's the impact now. And then the sales tax generated from that obviously changes the public safety fund and these other issues. And so, yes, that's real long-term financial impact.
And that shifts where the call, decreases the calls for service from that area too, when we're specifically talking about the public safety.
Correct, because there's a lot.
Yeah. Cool. Thank you.
Okay, we are now at Mayor and Council comments. City manager remarks.
I do have one for you all. You all directed the 20, so thanks for hanging with us tonight. We hit this one really heavy because of the regular sessions. We're trying to lighten the budget load on those days. So, thanks for hanging with us. The 23rd got packed. You all said to bring the ordinance that Zach was bringing on the 23rd, the sit and lie ordinance. Zach's actually ready to bring that at the next regular session, which if council's okay with that, we'll do it and that'll lessen some of the load on the 23rd.
Okay.
So, if I can get a motion from council to do that, I would appreciate it.
So, Counselor McCoy made the motion to move the sit and lying ordinance from public safety to us on the next regular meeting. September 9th. Do I have a second?
I did, yeah.
That was seconded by Mayor Protim Hidalgo Farin. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That passes. We'll see it next, on the 9th. City attorney remarks?
No comment, Mayor.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor McCoy, seconded by Counselor Christ. Do we adjourn? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned. Thank you, Harold.